Okay, Mr. Short, this is Chair Antiveras and my clock shows 4:30 PM. So would you please go ahead and start the study session?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we can go and begin the study session. We have two cases on the agenda for potentially for December 1st. And I am taking, that's for a hearing, the hearing agenda, I am taking both those cases, so I'll go ahead and share my screen. And get that started. Okay, so the first case is DRO 21012, it's a request for designer view for a laboratory building on a 1.42 acre parcel in the PC plant community zone where IL 10,000 lead industrial 10,000 square foot parcel size standards have been applied and that property is located at 4860 Kenmore Drive in Belmont. This is known as the BHO lab and this is a vicinity map showing the subject parcel in Belmont. Right here, you can see the pilot station, you can see the overpasses, this is on the south side of Belmont in the industrial area, obviously with the IL 10,000 standards applied here. And it is a site of a marijuana infusion facility at this point, they don't like to advertise that too much, but I thought you might like to know, so that's what this is. And this is the site plan, I'd much want a narrow photo, but this is the site plan, there's actually, the facility is located here. It was approved administratively, I believe about right when I first got here, about eight years ago, so it's been there quite a while. There's also another building on this same parcel, I'm not sure what that's used for, but in this case, this is this new lab that would be placed right here across these parking spaces, it's very much like a storage container, but it's not a storage container. It is actually constructed lab, you buy the entire lab, they they ship it to you and then you install it. As staff was reviewing the building permit for this, we determined that it required a DRO because as the commission may know, staff can only approve certain things under a DRO, that would be landscaping, lighting and fencing in the paint color for existing buildings only, not for new buildings. So this is a new building, so we did not find any way that staff could approve this. So this is a photo of the lab. Like I said, it's a lot like a storage container, I think it is 12 foot wide, so it's a little bit wider, maybe longer than a storage container, but it looks a lot like that, obviously constructed similar to that. And this is the color, so basically they would install it, they had painted this color and that should meet our DRO standards. And with that, are there any questions about this particular case? Okay, that was easy. We'll go ahead and move on to the next case. Okay, Madam Chair, the next case is CP 21070. It's a request for a conditional use permit for four 60 meter meteorological towers on four two acre portions of two parcels, excuse me?
Mr. Short, let me, let me interrupt you for just a second, on your, the screen that we're viewing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I just hadn't started the PowerPoint yet, I can go and pull it up.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, can you see that now?
Yes, that's much better, thank you.
So this is on, it's on four two acre portions of two parcels totaling 16,653.43 acres in the general zone. It's located approximately 22 miles east of Grand Canyon Junction, which is also known as Valley. And it's on these two parcels and as you may remember, there are four of these that are proposed and they typically take about two acres because of the fact that they have guy wires, the guy wires have to go out quite a bit. These are the standard 60 meter towers, I think the measurement in feet is something like 197.8 feet, something like that. It's under the 200 foot limit for the FFA requirement to put lights on them. So this is the site, or this is basically where the site is, you can see Valley over here, Grand Canyon Junction. And it's on two parcels in this area, the BREC site where the wind farm and solar panels recently approved is in this this general area right in here, so it's really close to this, there's we're getting quite a bit of interest in these types of renewable energy facilities in this area. Now go and show you a map of that, I turned this one on its side because it was showing really small on my screen. So if you look at the two blue ones down here, the two blue triangles, those are met towers that have already been approved and already been installed, they were approved in in two different CUP cases. So they're on the same parcel, these four, two up here and two down here are now proposed to be installed and I'm looking at it under they, that this should come to us in the next couple of years, I can't remember exactly the date. Kelly, were you able to look that up? Because we did have a pre effort with them recently and they did indicate they were coming fairly soon.
I did look up their narrative on SmartGov and it does not look like that information was included, so I wasn't able to find that.
Yeah, I think that was just some discussion, it probably wasn't recorded, but I believe it was the next couple of years, it would be called, they, they're kind of identifying at this point as the Zeus Wind Farm. So that's about all on that case, does the commission have any questions on this?
Mr. Short, I don't necessarily have a question, but rather a request. And my request would be that the commission be provided a large map, if you will, showing where the approved energy facilities are. On the ones up there, of course, that I'm speaking about would be Karen and then the Babett Ranch one that we approved. So we know that those two are there. And can you provide a map showing where every approved met tower is? So this commission can get an idea of a good overview of what all is going on in that area, because as you stated, there is beginning, there is quite a bit of interest. And I think we need an overview of what is going on there. Because met towers, they're putting them there for a purpose and a reason, that of course is to gain information to see if they're viable for a wind farm. And I just think it would be good that we have that. It was that something, Mr. Short, that that you could provide us?
Madam Chair, yes, yes, we can provide that, in fact, Melissa Shaw, who is, who is actually working on the, on the REO, the Renewable Energy Ordinance, she has a presentation for you a little bit later.
I see her, yes, yes, I see her raised right now. Ms. Shaw, is there something you want to add now, or is it, would it be more appropriate to add when you do your presentation on the cumulative impacts discussion?
Right, we will review a map and we do have that map available for you and we'll, we'll show that during that presentation in a moment, thank you.
Oh, that's awesome, thank you, Ms. Shaw, I have nothing further at this point.
And I want to reiterate, Madam Chair, that the map that that we have, that Melissa has, Ms. Shaw has, is what it shows is the approved sites, right, and it shows where met towers, general areas for met towers have been approved, I think that's probably what more what you'd like to see, rather than each and every met tower, probably just kind of a general map of this shows where they've been approved.
Yes, yes, exactly, so we can, so we can see what is going on, we can get a good overview of what is going on in this area, so I think, I think Ms. Shaw's presentation is probably going to answer the question that I had, so.
I think it will, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have four cases on for upper administrative renewal. Would you like to discuss any of those, or would you like to move forward?
I personally do not have any questions, but I, if any of the commissioners have questions, please unmute or raise your hand. And I am not seeing any Mr. Short, so why don't we go ahead and move into the Community Development Department update, please?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, the, so we are continuing to recruit for an Assistant Director Planning Manager position, unfortunately, we don't have any new information on that, it has, it has been difficult to to find qualified applicants for that, so we're not really clear how long that will take at this point. The county continues to be on that Phase 2 operations for COVID, you know, we continue to wear masks in the office when we're not at our workstations. The office is open to the public, but masks are required, hopefully in the near future, I've heard rumors that COVID may be dissipating a little bit, I hope that's true, we can, we can move on past that and start having live meetings again. And the next four items on here are basically for long range planning and Ms. Shaw is ready to talk about those.
Thank you, Bob, Sharon, Bob, did you want to show that agenda?
I can show the agenda.
I didn't know if normally that's up there, I can speak to those.
I can do that normally, yeah, I think normally people have those open, but it's a good point, I will do that. See if you can see it, if I can bring it over so you can see it. Yep, always something in the way here. Can you see it? I can't ever tell what's going to show up, oh, good.
Yes, thank you.
So there's, that's three through six.
Right, so briefly, then, the Dona Part Timberline from what area plan is ongoing, we had an open house in September, I think we talked about that last time. And the committee is now reviewing the comments, we had about 175 comments from the open house, both in person and online using our conveyor subscription program, so the committee is working their way through those and considering what or if policies to amend based on those comments. Any questions on the Dona Part Timberline from what area plan update? Okay, great, and just to remind everybody that we are still in the middle of the grant period for the Route 66 Brownfields Grant, and for those who are listening in, if you're not familiar with that, there is funding available for property owners that that have potential contamination issues on site and for sites that, commercial sites and industrial sites in particular, that may need some revitalization. This is a great opportunity to use some, some existing funding to have environmental assessments conducted to determine if there is substances like lead based paint or asbestos or possibly soil contamination on site, so if you have more and more, any questions or interested in that, NACOG is actually managing the, the grant and the application is on their website, but we do encourage anyone interested in in contacting us, so we can help you navigate that. And then as, any questions on the Brownfield Grant? And it's likely that that will be extended for another year, so we'll still have funds available next year for any properties that may wish to take advantage of that. And then we are continuing to work on the regional plan update with the City of Flagstaff and just to kind of give a little promotional plug here, Mondays at noon are these kind of info webinar sessions, we call them snapshots and they're presenting just a quick 15 minute, quick but dense, 15 minute presentation on topics that will help to build the regional plan. And so their webinars, every Monday at noon, you can find those on the Regional Plan 2045 Update webpage, and they do require registration, but other than that, it's just a and a quick in-depth snapshot into those topics. And then finally, we're continuing to work on the Utility Scale Renewable Energy Ordinance, and I do have that presentation ready for you, Sharon Taveras, when you're ready to see that.
Okay, Melissa, so you're saying that item number six is, does that relate to the REO presentation and cumulative impacts discussion?
Yes.
That is listed under, okay.
Madam Chair, I think actually on the agenda, we have, and I'll go ahead and scroll down to it, we actually have the discuss, these discussions, and that was under the roundtable.
Yes, and I think what I would like to do is, why don't we stay in order here, Melissa?
Okay.
And have you, I'm going to have you continue your presentation on, when we get down to the REO presentation under Commission and Staff Roundtable, okay?
Thank you very much, yes.
Okay, so let's go ahead, Mr. Short, let's go ahead and move to the Board of Supervisors update, then following that, the discussion requested by Commissioner Best, and then the third thing will be the presentation by Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we'll continue with that, so on November 9th, the board will hold a hearing on the Flagstaff Ranch mitigation plan modifications and that's all they have on their agenda from us at this time from the commission. So I will move forward to Commissioner Best's request to talk about conditional use permit renewals. And I'm just going to pull up a section of the zoning ordinance that refers to this, basically Commissioner Best wanted to know at what point could the commission possibly hear renewals, rather than, rather than them be administratively approved, so that additional conditions could be added? And that's especially for campgrounds and camps, and I think we're mostly looking at making sure that they have adequate fire service, adequate, they're, they're looking at fire issues and also weed issues, different things like that. And I'm going to pull up that section of the ordinance, can everyone see this all right? Okay, I guess so. So this is that's the section of the ordinance, basically what this says, this is under the, this is under the conditional use renewal section and it says that a conditional use permit must be renewed upon a hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, where, and it has a whole list of things here, a lot of them, you're certainly familiar with, so we won't go on to all of them. I'm going to just cut to the chase and go to to number four right here, where it says a change in the predicted impacts of the use has occurred. So I think if we get to a campground or something similar to that, that's being renewed, I think in some cases possibly an RV park, other uses. If we have that on the administrative renewal portion of the agenda like we have tonight, then I think the commission can say, I believe that there are additional impacts to this use and I would like to have that heard, you know, scheduled for a hearing from the commission. Does that make sense? Do we have any questions about that? I'm not sure, is Commissioner Best here?
Yes, he is, and Mr. Short, if I could just recap what you said, on if a campground appears on the administrative renewal portion of the study session, any commissioner can make a request that they would like to have that be held in a public hearing, correct?
Yes, I, I think, I, my understanding, looking at this, I would say that if a commissioner said that they felt like there were more impacts, that we, we would like to look at that, more fire danger, you know, something has happened, I think that would be a way of pulling that off and and scheduling it for a hearing. Now, in our previous code, I have to, I have say in our previous code, it did allow for commission, commissioners to directly do that. They could look at a case and say, I think I would like to to have, you know, this case should move forward to a hearing rather than be administratively renewed. That did not, that did not move forward to our, to our update in 2019, so that's no longer in this code. But I think this is a means of doing that, if, if, if we feel that any kind of additional impacts, commission, even staff fills their, her additional impacts from a use.
Okay, gotcha, Commissioner Best, let me ask you if that answers your question and your concerns?
In this particular case, it does, and I think that if you apply these different elements broadly, you could probably request that almost any administrative renewal come before the commission. I think it would be better just to allow commissioners to say, I would like to hear this before the commissioner, before the commission. This is not just about campgrounds, it's really about any case where you can see that it needs review, it could be health and safety concerns after a period of time, even though apparently everything has has concurred with the, with the CUP. In the case of the campgrounds, we, I've got a list of 15 odd things that we've developed over the last 18 months. Mostly related to impacts of campgrounds on natural areas around them and public and private land around them. And it took a while to get to that list of 15, you know, we, we kind of went to school, we learned a lot and a lot of the campgrounds would in, went in without all of those considerations, so I think it, change in predicted impacts would cover that. I'd be more comfortable if we could just have commissioners have the ability to just say, yes, I'd like to hear that, and I'll bring that up with my supervisor, that, that's going to take more firepower than we have in the in the commission, it would, it would require change in in the zoning ordinance, but I think we can, we can adequately deal with, with the immediate issue that I see with campgrounds. And I, and I think that that would probably apply to most issues that would come up, the change in predicted impacts, it's pretty broad, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best, and Mr. Short, do you have any comments after, after Commissioner Best has spoken?
Madam Chair, we can certainly look at that. Melissa can look at that as, as the long range planner and and make a note of that for the next update of the zoning ordinance. It was, like I said before, in earlier zoning ordinances and it was, it was pulled, it's no longer there, we did look at this ordinance and it, it's not there anymore. So we can't think about, you know, like putting that back in.
Bob, could you, all I can see is the one page here, could you give me more information about how I could find this in the code? Section, whatever.
Yeah, it's on, the code should be numbered, so, and hopefully this is consistent, but if you download it, it should be on page 194. And I'll go up a little bit, this, it talks about, it kind of talks about how, how renewals can occur. And then, which is kind of, it's kind of, yeah, it's kind of the same, it's kind of reiterates the same thing down here, it says how they can occur and how they can occur, basically, it cannot occur. So it's all right in here, there, there are other ways, you know, zoning violations on the property, you know, failure to meet the conditions, there's lots of other ways, but this one seems to make more sense in terms of pulling it off because of those concerns that you had, Commissioner Best.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Short, and Ms. Shaw, would you please give the commission your presentation?
Yes, thank you, I'll start sharing screen. Bob, I think you need to stop sharing, oh, there we go, okay. Thank you, Sharon Taveras and members of the commission, I do have an update for you, rather in-depth update on the progress of the Utility Scale Renewable Energy Ordinance, including the comments and the follow-up discussion on cumulative impacts from last month. So I just wanted to give you a quick recap, since So I just wanted to give you a quick recap, since last month's planning commission meeting in September, the advisory, the renewable energy advisory group met yesterday, October twenty-sixth, and had quite an interesting conversation. We've also been working on map updates as you, you just requested, and so we do have a, a site map that includes all of the approved projects, it also includes the approved but not constructed projects, the pending projects and the Met Tower, so we'll show you some detail on that, and then I can email it to members of the commission as well. We've also got a map update showing visual resources, and then we're working on one that will show habitat, wildlife habitat and corridors. And, and one thing I also wanted to mention real quickly, one of the members of the advisory group recommended that we put together a digital resource library, so we're going to go ahead and, and do that. It will be hosted on the Planning and Zoning Commission website, and that would be something that would have documents and other resources available for developers of these types of sites. And so, just to give you an idea of what the advisory committee discussed yesterday, they did have a conversation about approval of the Babett Ranch Energy Center, and they also just talked about specifically vegetative cover grading and site disturbance for these projects. They talked about cumulative impacts, wildlife management, and then also compliance, monitoring and mitigation. So we'll get into some detail here. And I did want to talk about vegetative cover grading and site disturbance, because this does go into the larger discussion about cumulative impacts. And I think out of yesterday's meeting, one of the takeaways was that because of the number of large-scale wind projects that have been permitted in the county, that the group feels that the, there's a pretty good understanding of wind construction methodology, and the draft ordinance for the most part reflects those understandings. What is not as well understood are the considerations for solar installations. So some of the main points that were discussed were how to minimize the grading impacts, you know, possibly just focusing on digging the posts in without doing some mass grading, how to protect and store topsoil, save that and then mix it with native seeds and reapply it on those disturbed sites, how to use vegetative protective fencing to keep equipment from driving over native vegetation that will not be disturbed. Also, some ideas on, you know, requiring avoidance of washes, steep slopes, slopes, rock out crops and ridges, and that would obviously require a detailed site plan, so that we can see from, more or less from the beginning, on how these are being designed. And this then does speak to this idea of cumulative impacts, and I wanted to mention that the comprehensive plan has an action item that specifically speaks to this, and it's up here on your screen. And it, what it does, though, it does zero in specifically on preventing fragmentation of wildlife movement areas. And it directs the county and agencies to analyze cumulative impacts of development, steps to mitigate and steps to maintain and enhance native ecosystems. And then to use this recent wildlife corridor study, which Jessica will speak to in a moment. So we do have that direction right out of, out of the comprehensive plan, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so we can focus on what that means for this draft. So following that direction, then, we've drafted a definition for this effort to go along with the ordinance, and this is just a draft. But the idea would be to consider cumulative impacts as the total effects from any existing or foreseeable future utility scale renewable energy project on the fragmentation of wildlife movement areas or habitat. And so to assist with cumul, understanding cumulative impacts, there are different tools and mapping tools that we can start to use to analyze these potential impacts. And it goes back to understanding where the projects are being cited overall. I just also want to mention that we, we are starting to develop, to develop a visual resource map. And then also with that, identifying, using Arizona Game and Fish data, wildlife movement corridors and habitat, so we'll speak to that again in a moment, but I wanted to give you just a picture, and I know because the county is so large, this is probably very small on your screen. But this is a draft map that we have put together showing all of the approved projects that are operating, approved that are not constructed, and then our pending projects. So when you, when you get this file and you can look at this and start to zoom in, as you can see in this view, you'll see where these projects are located, this is a draft, we're having some corrections made to this, and also having some of the colors changed, so it'll be clearer on your, on your screen, but what I also wanted to show, this map does show what we know to be identified visual resources, so you'll see national parks and monuments, county parks and natural areas, well, you also, you will also see some of the scenic and historic roads that are actually designated routes, and those are in color, so for instance, this orange, a gold color is a historic, a designated historic route. And then there is this All-American Road, which is down here, this is actually, I think that Route sixty-six may also be a designated All-American route, and then you've got your, we've got our scenic corridors, which you can see is one eighty going up here, so a closer view of that would be, would be on this slide. So we can start to see where the projects are being located, the important visual resources as we know them, and as we can define them based on our, our data information. And then we can also see on a large scale how these are all coming together. With that, then, another tool that's available, and we don't have the map ready yet, although we are requesting the data from Game and Fish in order to construct this individually, is the information that was referred to in the county's cumulative impact action item, where it referred to a wildlife quarter study, and that's this here. So Arizona Game and Fish has an environmental review tool, and with that, they show wildlife movement corridors and habitat. And I'm going to try to connect, and then Jessica will speak to the tool, because it's pretty interesting to see how much data is available for us at this time. Okay, it might take a second, second here to load up, did that display for you, did the map come up?
Ms. Shaw, the map did come up, and you were right, because Coconino County is so large, it's, you know, it's pretty small, so I think if, I would request that that map be forwarded to me, I, I would, I would like to see it.
Right, oh, thank you. Um, did, I think I may need to stop share and now go to the Game and Fish website, did the Game and Fish website come up?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Melissa, I'd like to see that map, too.
Right, I'm going to show, well, I will share, yes, I will send.
Yeah, if you'd send, send that around, yeah.
Yes, exactly, so I think now, did this map come up, the Game and Fish map?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it did.
Um, so Jessica, go ahead and take over, and I can certainly start zooming in, since I think, I don't think you can.
No, go, go ahead and close those red windows, and then, yeah, I'd be happy to speak about this.
It's not closing, I don't know why.
Because there's so many of them.
Oh.
You just got it.
There we go, okay.
Um, yeah, if you could zoom in some, like maybe to part of the county level, and maybe could you turn on, for example, critical habitat?
Yeah, let me zoom in first.
Yeah, that's a good skill.
That's good, okay, I'll turn on critical habitat.
Okay, so this website that Ms. Shaw is showing is a website run by Arizona Game and Fish, it's publicly available, anyone can go on and use it. And they have all kinds of things, you can't see them all on the screen right now, because if you scroll down on the left, there's so many. And it's a really great tool that I use in my work, and also can be super useful for us to use to look at cumulative impacts of different projects. So this is just an example that I had Melissa click on, you can see where there are federally designated areas of critical habitat for certain species. But if you want to turn that off and turn on the county stakeholders connectivity, that would be great. So now you can see these green striped areas, and they are, these are areas I have shown, I've pulled up in, in hearings before, so they may look familiar. And the, these were delineated based on a study carried out by Game and Fish with Coconino County as a partner in the effort. And they're based mostly on actual animal movement data, as well as theoretical movements based on habitat and sightings. And Melissa, would you mind clicking on identify, and then just clicking on one of them, just so I can sort of show how these work? So this one that she clicked on, you can see when the details pop up, it says name, Coconino Plateau. So there is a report put out as part of this effort, this is the spatial, these are the spatial data from that effort, but there's a report that goes along with it as well. And you can go to the report, which is online, and you can read all about this specific corridor. For example, right now, we could read about Coconino Plateau, and that would tell us that this is an important movement area for deer, elk and pronghorn, for example. There are other important movement areas that are important for eagles or snakes, or, so you can read about all the different species. And the reason all those details and data are so great to have is because, say, for example, we're looking at a solar farm, and if it's in a movement area, but it's for eagles, it's probably not going to have a big effect. And conversely, if it's a wind farm, and it is a movement area for eagles or birds or bats, that is going to have an, that, that is going to be a really important consideration. So when we have proposed projects coming in, utility scale renewables, we can use these tools here to look at whether it's in an important wildlife connectivity zone. And then Melissa has also pulled up these light purple ones, I don't know how easy they are to see. These are from another study, a totally different study, and this one was carried, the methodology was a little different. This one is more, it, it didn't really look at actual animal movements, it looked at areas in the state that are the least developed, least impacted by humans, and it basically connected those. So this is, it, it's interesting to look at both, because you can see how they match up or how they don't match up, so these are really important tools that we can use. So as far as the cumulative impacts discussion and what the impacts would be from all these different energy projects, if they fall in these connectivity zones, we can look at the zone and look at where these things would be built in the zone, and how, how they fall in, and we can look at what animals use the zone, where does the zone go to and from, how much of the area would be impacted by the project? And it can be a very useful tool for us to help decide on cumulative impacts, which is the discussion we've been having.
Jessica, just to jump in, we did request this data from Arizona Game and Fish, so we can use it locally on our GIS system.
Yes. Did anyone have any questions about cumulative impacts?
Yeah, this is, I saw, this is really fantastic. This is really conservation land, and a conservation land system.
Yeah.
Which is kind of the Holy Grail to me, shows big picture, and it shows what we need to conserve. The one super frustrating thing to me is that we have this great data for the fauna, the creatures, and, and we just forget that without the plants, the fauna goes away, too. And it's, it's for, you know, a bigger discussion on a different day, but to the south of us in the Sonoran Desert, certainly to the north and west of us in the Great Basin, there are tens of millions of acres that have gone to invasive weeds that have an extreme fire regime, and, you know, the, the creatures don't have anything to eat anymore, because it's all cheat grass in the Great Basin. So we can't deal with that today, it'd be great if Game and Fish would do it, or if somebody would do it, but we just, right now, don't have a position or a vehicle to put this kind of data together for plants that I'm aware of. So, but I, but I think this is really great information. I didn't know it was out there, so, super, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, Ms. Simmons, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say that, that it's really exciting to me, too, because we have these data, and we talk about trying to preserve wildlife habitat, and now that these projects have been done, we know where they are, and now, we, you guys as commissioners, and in the renewable energy ordinance, we can actually take some action to protect these areas.
Ms. Simmons, following up on Commissioner Best's comments, because most of the discussion that we've had has been on cumulative effects for the wildlife and avian species. But there is a cumulative impact on the vegetation as well. So how do we go about? What, what tool are we going to use as we assess the, any future development applications that might come before us?
Right, and that's, that's an excellent point. Like Commissioner Best said, we can't have the animals without the plants, and so I think the way we protect these, these corridors is by protecting the plants, which is what makes up the habitat. We're not going out and protecting animals individually, it's, we're, we're protecting the plants and we're protecting the environment. And now we know, we, we can look at each project as it comes up and see how much of an effect it'll have on the habitat, what the habitat type is, what animals use that habitat, and we can come up with a plan to best protect those areas.
And that goes back to, sorry.
Yeah, that does make sense. And what I, one thing that I'm wondering about, because we're talking about vegetation, on the approval for the Babett Ranch Energy, on, we have the discussion about the fencing around the solar, the, the solar panels. On, is there, are there any studies being done to show what really is the best thing for the habitat in that regard? Like, that is a very specific question or point that I'm kind of honing in on. How do we go about finding that out? Do you know?
Ms. Simmons? I, I'm aware of a little bit of work that's been done, a lot of it has been done in, in association with desert tortoises in, more like, close, more like in Southern California. But I have also read, I read one other study on, it was, I for, it was in the Southwest, but I forget where exactly, and it had to do with kit foxes, and they just found some interesting effects, which was that these kit foxes loved being in these areas with no predators, and it was, there, there were a lot of unanticipated cascading ecological effects, and I, I can go back and look at that paper and share those results, but I think the main point is, it definitely depends on the assemblage of species you have in a particular area. And around here and on Babett ranches, it's not a lot of particularly sensitive or listed animals, so I, for, for BREC, my concern was not any particular species such as a tortoise or a kit fox, but just how much habitat was being blocked off, and what percent of that habitat, was it of the larger habitat available?
Okay, on, I, I'm probably going to have to, you know, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Best, I mean, there, as we continue to do this, as we learn, as we approve, et cetera, on, I think it is important to know, so you know, what the effects really are, so let me ask the question this way. What do you feel, or what do the studies show is the most beneficial for habitat? Keeping the fence all the way to the bottom, or raising it up six inches?
For the habitat, so it, it's a complicated question, because if you fence off a certain amount of habitat, which is that, that's a study method that's used a lot, it's called an exclusion plot, and you fence off the animals outside of a certain bit of habitat, you see it a lot around here with aspen, trying to protect regrowing aspen from deer and elk. And so it can be good for the plants itself, at least initially, because they'll probably grow and flourish, but then, most plants have evolved. But then most plants have evolved to be fed on by the animals that live there. And then since we've eliminated predators, there are way more herbivores than have been historically. So it's a complicated question and not one I can say one or the other to.
Okay. Answer two?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, I asked, is, is that, okay, so it's a complicated question. And I agree with you on that. Is there any, at what point do we get an answer to this complicated question?
Right, yeah, it's a good question. I mean, for this particular situation, not talking about broader things like I may have been doing, if we're talking about fencing off solar arrays in Coconino County, I think the more habitat we can leave available to animals, the better. I think if we can leave the gap and let more animals into these arrays, so that more natural processes can carry out, I think that'd probably be good. These, a lot of these animals that come in may be then protected by from predation, which might cause some different processes going on inside them. But I think overall, it's probably beneficial, but I can't just say that for sure in a sweeping statement, 100%.
Madam Chair, if I could just interject a thought here as well. One of the standards, and I don't have it on the screen, for fencing is to fence groups of the arrays instead of an entire site. So the idea would be to keep the groups clustered and spaces in between open as much as possible. And that's where we get into needing to see a detailed site plan. But that is certainly something to consider. And at the same time, looking at topography, ridges, slopes, things like that, and avoiding those areas and keeping those open corridors. So it is a difficult question, but there may be strategies that we can use to minimize the fencing as much as possible.
Yeah, I think, I think that we've got, I think we've got quite a bit of work to do to really analyze this. Because what is best for the habitat and for the wildlife may not be what is, what, what the developer would feel would be for their best interests. And so I see these competing on, what would you say, competing ideas that I would think that they might clash at some point. And that's why I'm trying, really to kind of get ahead of this before we start seeing more of these come in. Because it actually really already has clashed, if you will, because it clashed on, on the Babett Ranch one. Because it was going to come all the way down, or excuse me, there was going to be a gap. And then it came down, and so it's completely fenced off. And therein, you can see that there's competing interests on this. And so I do think that it would be good to get this information. It's going to be very important for me to have this as I, as I begin to evaluate any future sites that are going to be coming. So with that, I'm going to leave it alone for now. I do see Commissioner Best hand raised. So Commissioner Best, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Anybody can attend, of course, the Renewable Energy Ordinance meetings. And the last one, boy, you should have been there. It was great, because that, this is exactly what we're working on. We have the competing positive values of, we want to generate renewable energy in Coconino County. And at the same time, we want to retain our ecology, the robustness of the plants and animals. And, you know, those things can be in conflict, but there's a lot of exciting new stuff going on. One of our members said, said, that, whatever his last name is. Is it Johnson, Melissa?
Yes.
Thank you. Came up with a bunch of websites showing solar arrays in different parts of the country that are installed without blading the land, that kind of roll with the landscape, where they're raising crops, they're grazing, raising, grazing sheep under them. They are using them for wildflower habitat, for pollinators. There's lots going on. We have a couple of different companies. The one, the Clanera, that I think is coming at us from Babett Ranches, is one of our next projects, has said, at least conversationally, that they will mow but not blade as they install. We didn't get that commitment yet from Nextera, to my knowledge. But I'd encourage anyone to attend these meetings, because that's exactly what we're working on. And there's a lot of exciting conversations going on.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best, for that information. I am glad that this, that this is being discussed. I just am at a lack of time right now to be able to attend as many meetings as I need to attend to gain all of this information. But I am, I am glad that this is being discussed. You know, something as I, I do many, many road trips. I've traveled, I mean, thousands and thousands of miles seriously in a car around the United States. And I've traveled through some very, very beautiful areas. And I've traveled through some areas that I thought, man, why don't they put all of these energy projects here? There is literally nothing beautiful about them. And I'm just, I'm just wondering, Melissa, or Ms. Shaw, do you have any information as to how these developers look for their sites? Because it just seems like common sense to me that in these beautiful pristine areas, which I consider Coconino County to be, and some of the places that are being developed, why can't we put these in areas that are just really ugly? Has anyone asked that question? Because I, that thought has run through my mind when I drive through just some really ugly places.
That is a question that's been asked maybe in a different way.
Okay.
The developers are looking at the resource and either the wind or the solar resource. And in Arizona, and I don't have the map up here, but I, there's the National Renewable Energy Lab has a public website that anybody can go on to and, and look at the solar resource and the winds resource mapping. So we do know that in Coconino County, it's a, it's a good place for wind. It's a much better place for solar, and that's due to the elevation and our latitude. Interestingly, in Arizona, rather in the country, Pinal County in Arizona is, I believe, the best place in the country for solar resource. Pinal County has had over 300 applications for solar installations. So Coconino County does not have as rich of a solar resource availability, but we have a very, very good sighting for solar resources. So that's what they're looking at. They're really looking at the gain and the ability to generate energy from the location. I'm not, you know, obviously an expert or in terms of the details on why that is. But I can certainly share those maps and, or at least the links to those maps, so we can explore those further. But that is my understanding in terms of why we're seeing those here.
Okay, okay, thank you, Ms. Shaw. Commissioner Best, you still have your hand raised. Is there anything additional you wanted to add?
I will take my hand down, but let me just comment quickly. Two issues that bring us renewable energy here are number one, people are trying to make money on ranches that are seeing less and less grass because of the drought. So Babett Ranches has committed, and I, and I think they would say this, and actually I've heard Billy Cordasco say it publicly, that, you know, they're trying to not sell off their land, but it's hard to make a living as a rancher. And this is a way that they can use their, their land to make some money and still keep it intact. The other issue is linkages to and connectivity to major sources of being able to carry the energy. We've got major transmission lines going through the Babett Ranch, and that helps a lot. You've got to move the electrons someplace. And so it could be the ugliest place in the world, but if there's no transmission line nearby and you have to build a new transmission line, that could be a deal killer. And I'll take my hand.
Yeah, and, and, and thank you, Commissioner Best, I do understand that. So thank you. As, I think we can all agree that there's still a lot to look at in this. We're learning a lot and we, as we learn, as we get the knowledge, we just need to have the wisdom to apply it appropriately. So with that, I'm, I'm not going to say anymore. Do any other commissioners have any comments, questions or input? Okay, I am not seeing any. We've got Mr. Short or Ms. Shaw, do you have any additional comments?
I'm sure I don't have anything else.
I, the only, I guess, additional update I would provide is that there will be a site visit out to Parent Ranch. Mike McCauley has offered to organize that. And then we are going to be giving the Board of Supervisors an update on November 2nd about long range projects, including this one. And we'll continue to work with the advisory group on drafting the ordinance. And at some point after work sessions are concluded with the planning commission and the board of supervisors, they can, and open house. And, and then at some point move to public hearings on this project.
Okay, okay, thank you for that, Ms. Shaw. All right, my clock says 5:28 PM. So we've got two, we've got two minutes. If anyone wants to take, catch their breath, then we'll start back. We'll start the public hearing at 5:30 PM sharp. Mr. Short, I am looking at the participants for the meeting, and I'm showing that we do not have Commissioner, oh, there's Commissioner Williams right there. So we, we're definitely in good shape for this meeting.
Contract with the general contractor.
Okay, Mr. Short. It is 5:30, so I'm going to ask you to begin the meeting. But before you do, I'm going to ask specifically Noe Olson. Hopefully I pronounced your name right. Would you please turn off your camera? And we have a M. Christian who needs to mute, please, as we begin the meeting. Mr. Olson, can you please turn off your camera? All right, Mr. Short, it is 5:30. Let's go ahead and we're going to start the meeting.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm going to start with the meeting rules and procedures. So welcome to the October 27th, 2021 meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. No additional public comments may be made unless requested by a commissioner. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plot approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. And with that, thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. The first item on the agenda tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Short, if you would please lead us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the September 29th, 2021 minutes. If there are no corrections, let's move to a motion in a second, please. Okay, I am not seeing any, so let's go ahead and I will accept a motion in a second.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Best. And I move that we accept the minutes from September 29th.
I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Best and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of the September 29th, 2021 minutes. All of those in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Williams?
It's Dan.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
And this is Chair Auntie Veris, I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The first item under public hearings is case number CUP 21-051.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This case has been withdrawn. The reasons were in your staff report given as a memo. If you'd like, I can share my screen, working on doing that real quick, so that you can see the reasons and it can be on the record for the public. All right, so originally, this was on your study session as a renewal of CUP 06060. However, that was only for a temporary office trailer, and that is no longer on the property. The expansion of the building was approved through CUP 99-064, and this one did not require a renewal. So technically, under this approval, their use may continue. No complaints have been received. And are there any questions from the commission?
Okay, I'm not seeing any, Ms. Bingham, and that makes, that makes absolute perfect sense. So we will go ahead and move to the second item on the agenda. So we will go ahead and move to the second item on the agenda. And that is case number ZC two one dash zero zero nine. Um, Ms. Bingham? Or Mr. Short? So anybody?
Yes.
Okay, can anyone hear me? Can you?
Yes, Madam Chair, I can hear you. I I apologize. I think I did not. I failed to unmute, so let me start.
Okay. Okay, no, yeah, if you could start from the beginning, please. I thought we were having those issues again. So, oh, good. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll begin again. This case is the Briar Patch and Zone Change CC twenty one zero zero nine. The applicant or the property owner in this case is Olson Briar Patch LLC of Sedona. The applicant is Jamie Redell of S E C in Cottonwood. The existing zoning is G General. The proposed zoning is Resort Commercial in the parcels. This includes four parcels totaling eight point one acres. This case, the request is a zone change from the general zone to the resort commercial zone for the existing Briar Patch Inn to convert a legal non-conforming use to a conforming use. Uh, this is a vicinity map showing the subject property is way down in Oak Creek Canyon. And sort of in the middle or on the lower part of Oak Creek Canyon. And these, this is an aerial photo showing the subject properties. There are four total properties, uh, and they are located along Oak Creek and the general zone, as I said before, across the street, you also have some general zone properties. You have this AR two zone property here. And then on the east side, you have National Forest Land. All right, this is the background on this case. The first cabin cabins of the Briar Pit Briar Patch Inn were first developed in the nineteen forties. And at that time, they were known as Rockies cottages. So some of these cabins go way back. In nineteen eighty three, the Olsons purchased the property to the south. That was the lot to the south. They removed a mobile home park from that parcel and they began developing additional cabins. Uh, in nineteen eighty five, they purchased the Terracotta Resort, which is the property to the north. And they combined that with the Briar Patch Inn to create the the current development that has existed there for a long time. This was approved in through CUP eighty five seventeen for an expansion of a non-conforming use. And unfortunately, staff was on it. Those that file was recently scanned and put away and I was unable to identify it. But that's my understanding is that's what that particular CUP was for. So this has existed for a legal non-conforming use for quite some time now. So in April of twenty twenty, the applicant applied for a building permit so that they could replace what was a dilapidated mobile home with a new manufactured home to be used as employee housing. And as staff looked at this, we determined that the best thing to do at this point was to change the zone to Resort Commercial. Uh, and that would be both a way of approving the new unit on the property and also eliminating this non-conforming status of the Briar Patch Inn. Uh, I recently talked to Mr. Olson. He indicated that this was something they had discussed for a long time, going back to previous staff for many years and that it was a probably a good time to move forward with this. That manufactured home has already been placed on the property and it'll obtain final approval once the zone change is approved. And this is a site plan showing the subject property. Uh, as you come down Highway eighty nine A, there is a main drive into the property from this location. And up in this area, I believe this is the old Terracotta Resort. There are several units in here along this area. Uh, there's quite a bit of open space up against the creek right here. And we'll talk about that in a minute. There's a grass area. This looks like the place that she's for. I believe there's a sheep pasture here. And in some other additional grassy areas in this area. And this is a quite a quite a few parking spaces right here. There are twelve parking spaces right here. So there appear to be adequate parking on this site for this use. This is the southern half of the property. So again, this is the driveway, main driveway coming in. Uh, right up here, there is a a drive that goes into this parcel. This is actually a very tiny parcel that was only bought by the Olsons according to the records on um, on our parcel viewer in nineteen ninety eight. And I believe that is correct. Like the applicant or the owner can correct me if that's not correct. So that would be included in this zone change. All of it is included as part of this development as an RC zone under this master development plan. Uh, so as you come down and around, you'll there, there is the office here. This is an office uh, and a dining area. They do serve breakfast here. I don't know if they have any other food service here. But I know they do serve breakfast at in this dining area. Very nice old historic building is is located here. As you walk around, you'll come, there's a, there's some more, there's a nice grass area in the area for people to sit. And then there's actually access down by the creek right here. And I'll show you some photos of that in a minute. There's some additional uh, buildings for lodging. There's nineteen total lodging units. And there's also some maintenance areas done in here. I believe the trailer down here is used for this kind of a staff lounge. I believe this is what Mr. Olson told me. Yeah, this is a picture of that trailer already on site. Yet it does need to go through final approval from the building division. And these are the resort commercial zoning standards. What makes this a good place for resort commercial is first of all, it's a resort, of course, and that there are a lot, this is a planned development. So there's a lot of flexibility in the zoning standards that allows for people existing in open space. It's does to be thirty percent, but it 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 is existing. It can be delineated on the map. And they do, they do have plenty of area for for open space as required. Also for existing landscaping and existing signage. The existing uses on the property are nineteen lodging units, employee housing, food service. Uh, food service, like I said, in in that area, I pointed out that serves breakfast. They have retail sales and that's just simply they sell a few items in the in the office there. A few little kind of, you know, jewelry items and things like that. Uh, I also noted on the website that they have weddings and they do limit the number to twenty guests and staff. At least that is very appropriate. So that would also be approved with this. We have, haven't heard any complaints as far as I know on on weddings here. And that is a small number. You know, the applicant can, the applicant or the owner can comment more on that. Unfortunately, or probably fortunately, non-conforming lighting is required to meet current standards. So there's a section in the zoning ordinance under non-conforming uses that indicates that if you change a non-conforming use to a conforming use, it does need to meet current lighting standards. And the advocate has indicated that they are okay with doing that. Uh, I did also, we did also include in the conditions, I'll talk about a little bit later, is the requirement for a sign that would inform guests about s- sensitive species that live in this area in this area. And the applicant or the owner is also indicated that they would be okay with installing that sign. This is a picture of the open space. This is the area along the creek where they have or some of the open space. This is a picture along the creek where they have the tables looking off into the creek. And then from that area to the left, you can walk down and you're very close to the creek as you can see here to Oak Creek. Uh, I think it may continue on. I'm not sure. I did not go down here, but I did. I did note this area. This is another open space area. These are these grassy places that are located throughout the site, making it quite a quite a nice site. And this is the sheep pasture. Uh, I only saw two sheep here. It is actually quite a fairly large area. And but there are only two sheep, so it did not look like the sheep would have a big impact sometimes times of wildlife. Or excuse me, livestock can have an impact on the creek. But with only two, I did not see any more. I'm not sure if there were more, but it did not seem to be a large impact on this area. And in terms of landscaping, you've of course seen some landscaping earlier on. This is pretty thick lush landscaping in this area. This is a riparian area of Oak Creek and that is to be expected. So there is a lot of existing landscaping here. Uh, some of it native. Uh, not being an expert on on plant species, I'm not sure with what's native and what's not, to be honest. But it certainly seems to be adequate. This is another picture showing the landscaping in this area and some of the cabins, of course, some of the lodging units. This is the signage that is along Highway eighty nine frontage. So this is probably the most important signage that that would that the commission will approve for this area. Uh, basically, there's this monument sign that seems to be very adequate and very appropriate for Oak Creek. And then there's also this sign here as well. You can see on the side over here, some signage that is directional. And that's what you'll mostly, that's what we mostly found in at this site is directional signage. Um, which is allowed in the in the code. So as part of this package, the the commission would approve of the signage that exists on the site now. Now, I did not provide all of that in your packet. If you'd like to see that, I can pull it up and show you. Uh, but uh, it is something that will be documented as part of this zone change. And as I said, it's mostly directional. You see nice signs like this. You see signage that that shows where a particular cabin is. Each each lodging unit has its own name. So that's basically the signage you'll see throughout the site. And in terms of lighting, I noted several of these two different of of this, these two styles. There's these two different styles of lighting uh, throughout the site. The applicant, as you might expect, in the Blacklift Inn, they are, they are very supportive of dark skies. I don't think anyone wants to come to Oak Creek Canyon in a beautiful spot like this and not be able to see the stars. So they have very limited lighting throughout the site. They've even, as you can see, they the the bulbs here are even yellow. They've even used yellow bulbs. I unfortunately, they probably, I'm pretty sure they don't. Obviously, this one is not uh, shielded. This one's not fully shielded at ninety degrees. A fully shielded light would, the the bulb would not show below this area right here. So they will have to update their lighting and we have a lighting specialist on staff now. And he would, he has indicated he will help them with picking out the right kinds of lights. Terms of citizen participation, they had a meeting on June eighteenth. Three people attended and signed in. The applicant indicated there were no concerns about the application. Of course, it does, this application does not really change anything with the use. It just legitimizes the use and changes the zone to an appropriate, you know, RC zone. Wanted to point out a couple of conditions. This is conditions three and four. Uh, three deals with lighting and indicates they would need to bring up, bring their outdoor lighting into full compliance. And it has a couple of stipulations that we typically include with DRO applications. And then, uh, condition number four, basically, in a nutshell, it requires the Oak Creek Fire Chief to come to the site and inspect the site and provide uh, you know, some guidance for the applicant. Just by the way, is already in the Oak Creek Fire District, so it's already there. Um, but the fire chief can come by and he can check the site and provide some input in terms of making the site firewise. And, uh, you know, setting up emergency response plans and making sure the smoking areas and defensible spaces and landscape maintenance is all adequate to help prevent fires. Wanted to look at a couple of some of the policies in the comprehensive plan. That first one's really important and really applicable in this case to eliminate land use or zoning conflicts. Transition non-conforming uses to conforming use and work to alleviate the negative impacts on conforming uses over time. Uh, the second one, commercial development projects shall be located in and designed in a manner that is compatible with the character of the area in which a project is proposed. Obviously, obviously, this is very compatible with the Oak Creek area. And then, uh, the last one, this support tourist-related developments uh, projects that focus on conserving and showcasing the county's unique natural and cultural and dark skies features. Uh, and here's some policies also from the Oak Creek Area Plan. I'll go ahead and read the first one. Coconino County shall exercise discretion in the review of development proposals for private lands in Oak Creek Canyon by paying particular attention to the suitability of the proposed use to the environmental aesthetic and recreational characteristics of their surroundings. And of course, this this development uh, is is very much in tune with that particular policy. The other policies have have a lot to do with um, conservation, with preservation, with wildlife and uh, and those are obviously very important to Oak Creek. And also related to wildlife. So I did get some good comments from the wildlife planner. Uh, I hope the commission got a chance to read those. They were, they were kind of, they're very interesting. It certainly pointed out the fact that there are a lot of endangered and threatened species in this area. And that is the reason that staff actually came up with the idea for a permanent sign to be installed along the creek to inform guests of local species and the sensitive nature of this area. We had thought about possibly literature left at the, you know, at the office. But we felt that a sign like this would probably have the most impact. It's already developed. So there's, you're not going to really change that very much. But we felt it was important to, for the owner to inform guests of the sensitivity of that creek. It it certainly has quite a few impacts, as we all know. These are the findings for a zone change. I've addressed them in the staff report. And these are the additional findings for a planned district zone change. There, these are actually very, very similar to to the zone change findings with a couple of additions. And with that, staff recommends the commission forwards a recommendation of approval of ZC twenty one oh two to the Board of Supervisors with the proposed conditions. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Mr. Short, can I ask you to put up the conditions on the screen so we all can look at them? For whatever reason, mine aren't, the numbers of mine are not correlating with the ones you have. So I'm trying to figure out what what's going on here.
Right, let me pull that up. Can you save this? Can you see this? Okay, this is the staff report.
Yes.
Okay, so. Condition one starts there. It's your basic condition that, you know, you accept the master development plan to prove that with the existing landscaping signage, etc., and the uses.
Yeah, okay. You know what, Mr. Short? I think I've got, I think I figured out because mine do match that. When you were talking about the lighting, you called out, you called out condition number three. And it is in fact, condition number two. So mine are now on. We're on the same page, so I am, so I am good with that.
Okay, thanks, Madam Chair. I think what happened was when it went to the slide, it changed numbers or it inadvertently changed that. So good, I'm glad that's.
Okay, but we're, we're good. So Commissioner Best, I see you unmuted. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, when we, when we require that they look at the sewer system on the manufactured home, does that requirement extend to the entire property or is it just for that structure?
Commissioner Best, I did discuss this with our environmental quality supervisor and he ended, he indicated that it does. Zone changes not trigger an entire property to come into compliance. Basically, yeah, it's just that structure. They have to demonstrate that that structure doesn't increase, you know, that the system still meets the capacity, the additional capacity required from that structure.
You know, I know that contamination of Oak Creek through sewer systems is an issue. This is a property that goes back at least forty years. Do we have the authority to ask them to do a full analysis?
Mr. Best, under, according to our environmental quality supervisor, who is the expert in this field, he said we, we do not, under a zone change, that we do not have the authority to make them change the entire system, to upgrade the entire system. He was, he was pretty clear about that. I don't really know of anything else. I mean, that's kind of his field, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I am not seeing any other commissioners with their hands raised or unmuted. So I am going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission. If so, please state your name and address for the record. And I would also like to ask if you have received and read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions that are stated. So with that, on, Mr. Olson, I see that you have, that you are unmuted. So please address the commission with that, with the direction I just provided.
This is Jamie Riddell with SEC. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I know Rob wanted to speak on behalf of the Briar Patch Inn as they are the current owners and have been for some time.
Let me, okay, hold on just a minute. Can you please state your name and address for the record, please, and then continue on?
This is Jamie Riddell with SEC. My address is eight two five Cove Parkway, Cutwood, Arizona, eight six three two six. I am the applicant and authorized agent for the application for Briar Patch Inn. I believe, you know, with the correspondence, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure why we're not getting Rob on here. I believe with the correspondence going back and forth, the compliance within the zone change is very applicable. The lighting requirements, the manufactured home requirements for the building permit, all of those things of that nature. We're definitely willing to comply with, understanding this is kind of a nonconforming use and a grandfathered use for so many years. We would just like to see it continue in this, you know, this direction, but also be zoned to what the current existing use is. As far as everything that Bob had, you know, Bob Short has put our way or any, you know, requirements that are going to happen within the signage, the lighting. Yeah, we're on board to, you know, to do those upgrades and to also move forward.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Riddell. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Riddell at this time? Okay, I am not seeing any. So I am going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening on this case. If so, please raise your hand or unmute and I will get to you. Okay, and I am not seeing any. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close, close that and open it up to commission discussion. Ms. Williams, will you start tonight?
Yeah, I, I can certainly make the findings of bringing this property into compliance with this zone change. And it looks good to me. I don't really have anything else to say but that.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Williams. Commissioner Clifford.
I can make the findings. The property's been there for so many years. They're a staple in Oak Creek and a lot of people go there. I can make the findings to approve. I think it's a good project.
Thank you. Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually went and toured the property just this morning. And it's a very, very beautiful property. It really is distinctive. It's in excellent condition. The impact on Oak Creek seems to be fairly minor. The south end of the property that the bank is steep enough so people can't scramble down. I went to the north end of the property and there are several very light paths that go down to the creek, but impact was very minimal. In fact, every time I went down to the creek, I got lost, had a hard time finding my, my way back. The trail was so light. The one thing I might say is condition number four, the last sentence. Because there are numerous trails down to the creek on the north end and also some of the cabins seem to have their own trails. We might just say the sign shall be installed at a location approved by wild, by the wildlife planner prior to installation and let the wildlife planner figure out what the best location is. It may not be on a trail. It could be next to the office where everyone goes. And I think they provide breakfast there. It smelled really wonderful this morning. So that would be my, my only consideration. I, I I'm sorry that we're not going to take a look at the septic system. But that's an issue for another day. I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Best, would you look at condition number four? I'm reading the last sentence of that condition. And it says the sign shall be installed at a location where Oak Creek is accessible to guests and approved by the wildlife planner prior to installation. Is that the sentence that you would like modified?
Yes, I would just say the sign shall be installed at a location approved by the wildlife planner prior to installation. It, the best place may or may not be where guests have access to the creek because there are numerous places like that. It may be that just outside of the office where everyone has to go would be the best location. And I'm not sure, but I think the wildlife planner can, can answer that question.
Okay, okay, got you. And thank you, Mr. Short, for, for showing that modified condition. Okay, thank you, Mr. Best. Commissioner Burton.
I can make the findings. The property's been there forever and, yeah, I see no reason not to move this forward for approval.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, I can also make findings after reviewing everything in detail. And also, especially after numerous visits to that area for rezoning or CUPs over the years. It's a beautiful spot and I think that it would be appropriate to change the zoning as requested. I agree with the conditions as stated. I also agree with Commissioner Best's suggestion about the sign location. So I'm in full support of recommending this to the board of supervisors.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. And Commissioner Walters.
I can make the findings for recommendation of approval. I'm very familiar with this property and growing up down there. It's, it's a great place and I think it's a great way for people to visit the canyon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is Chair Aunt Taveras. I also can make the findings to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. And I also am in favor of modifying condition number four as stated by Commissioner Best. That, that makes sense to me. And I just have to tell you, I just want to tell the applicant, Bill Olsons, what a beautiful property you have and what a great job you, you are doing. It is, it is exemplary. So thank you so much. With that, why don't we go ahead and move to a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve ZC dash twenty one dash zero zero nine for recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Okay, let's hold on a minute. Commissioner Williams, you made the motion. So we had talked about modifying condition number four. Did you want that included in your motion?
Yes, I did. Thank you for that reminder.
Okay, all right. So the motion then is for to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors, modifying condition number four on to strike the words where Oak Creek is accessible to guests. And so it's simply going to say the sign shall be installed at a location approved by the wildlife planner prior to installation. Okay, and so Commissioner Walters, do you want to second that motion?
I do. As modified.
Okay, all right. We've got a motion and a second to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for ZC twenty one dash zero zero nine. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
This is, or excuse me, this is Chair Aunt Taveras, and I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The next case under public hearings is case number DRO twenty one dash zero one zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Can everyone hear me this time?
I can hear you, Bob.
Okay, thank you. This case is the Ponderosa Fire Station DRO, DRO twenty one zero one zero. In this case, the property owner is the Ponderosa Fire District of Belmont, Arizona. The applicant is William Riley of Flagstaff. The location of the property is at eleven nine fifty one Shadow Mountain Drive in Belmont, just east of the Interstate forty interchange. The zoning is planned community with CH ten thousand standards applied, size of the property is one point four acres. And the request is design review for a fire station expansion. This is vicinity map showing the subject property in Belmont within that Flag Meadows neighborhood. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property. This is the existing building, fire station on the site. The expansion would go out here. You can see that are, there's actually already kind of a pad that was built, I think, long ago for this fire station. And it's, it's ready for it. Probably needs some kind of some modification at this point. Here's some background on this, this bigger case. The fire station was approved through CUP oh three zero three eight in two thousand and three. At that time, a public meeting room was approved. It was to be provided by the developer of the Flag Set Meadows Unit Three subdivision. However, the two thousand and eight recession prevented completion of that subdivision and that delayed funding for the meeting room. Over the last few years, as the commission may know, the subdivision has resumed development. It is now building houses all around the fire station. And that funding was provided for the meeting room and they have moved forward with the proposed expansion. And this is the proposed development. It is to expand the fire station from thirty five hundred and ninety seven square feet to sixty four hundred and sixty seven square feet. That includes a community meeting room for thirty to fifty people, new fire chief, assistant chief, and office manager offices, two additional dorm rooms, two restrooms, and a kitchen dining area expansion. They also are proposing to add new landscaping, lighting and signage. They also have proposed to paint the shed to match the expansion. And that is a burlap color that I can show you with materials later. And then also the, the metal storage container did not appear. I did not see where it was addressed. But staff has conditioned that to also be painted to match the new building. And this is a picture of that storage shed and the metal storage container. These are typically allowed to be installed in this zone with a, an administrative permit. However, as we talked about before with the update to the Belmont area plan and the addition of the design review, they, they need to be, any kind of building needs to be part of the design review. This is a site plan showing the site. So this is the existing building. This hashed mark is the new addition, proposed new addition, also putting in new parking spaces. I did look at the parking as I believe Commissioner Best had requested and determined that they have exactly the amount of parking that they, they need for this particular, the uses for the community meeting room and for the fire station. And this is a floor plan showing the, the new building on the inside. So this is the community meeting room. And then there's, of course, all these offices, expanded kitchen and etc. This is a landscape plan that they have provided. The, this site has existing landscaping that was approved through that original CUP and also new landscaping. So some of that landscaping has died from the, from the old approval. A lot of it is still alive and looks very good. And they have added additional landscaping. It's basically the trees are ponderosa pine and aspen. There are already some aspens on this, on this property. And then there are several shrubs that look to be low water use shrubs, also some shrubs that are typically used for zerscaping. And this is the existing fire station. You can see some of that, that landscaping that is still existing. And some of the aspen trees in the background. And this is some more of that existing landscaping. This is the materials and colors that they are proposing to use. This is the materials and colors that they are proposing to use. Primarily metal, a lot of metal and CMU, CMU block, that's masonry block. And these are the different colors that would be used for that. Some of them are designed to match with the existing building. For example, the Wayne Scoding is designed to to master some colors designed to match with the Wayne Scoding and then also the the color of the trim. This is a renderings of the of the proposed new expansion. As you can see, it has a bump out on the front, has its metal around here, has CMU and then it has some some trim, some reddish colored trim CMU. And this is the elevation. This elevation, basically, you'd see from the street. This is looking straight from the street, I believe, south. This is the east elevation. I do want to point out the sign right here and if you read the staff report, you know what I'm getting to, but we'll talk about that in a minute. So this is the existing sign on the site. It was actually approved through CUP. And it is nine feet tall. We're typically in the public, some are public use for, excuse me, public, some are public uses, which include fire stations. They are limited to six feet. So there is a sign, existing sign on the property. And again, I'll point out this sign that is the proposed sign that they would like to add to this building. Am I going backwards here? Sorry about that. There we go. Yes, I am going backwards. This is the sign, the proposed wall sign for for that front. Unfortunately, this is something that was a little bit of a surprise for staff. But this section of code, as you can see, it says basically public and some up of the uses in the commercial zones allows one sign not exceeding thirty square feet in area and freestanding signs shall not exceed six feet in height. So there's already a sign on this property. A set according this code section, a second sign is not allowed. So that sign cannot be approved as part of the DRO process. I think the Commission is used to conditional use permits. And with conditional use permits, additional signage can be approved. But what not not with DR rows for this in this for this particular use. So that's something that Commission can discuss. The applicant may request a variance to allow additional sign. It is not at all guaranteed that the variance would be approved. In terms of lighting, there is not a lot of new lighting that's proposed for this site. It's basically under the canopy and also had building entrances. There's a there's a few different entrances entrances on the side of the building. So lighting is always required for an entrance. I'm using that same standard that has often been used for DROs. It's in it's conditioned in the staff report. And of course, a lighting permit would be required to be installed. And I have to say, the applicant hasn't provided details about what kind of lighting. But it will be installed under that canopy, so it is shielded because of that. And of course, our our lighting expert at the county, he will be approving the lighting permit to make sure it meets the standards. I did want to add one little thing here. I did miss the fact in the in the condition that they would need to install lighting at exterior doors. So I just added that to this condition number five. Okay, in terms of DRO compliance with Belmont Area Design Guidelines, they are using metal and CMU block materials which are cited in that in those guidelines. They're using muted or tone colors. The colors they point out are burlap, ponderosa red, dark brown and dark bronze, among others. The in terms of the landscaping, the combined and existing, excuse me, the combined existing and proposed landscaping is consistent with previous approvals. And that was through that first CUP. Lighting must, of course, conform to the ordinance, be fully shielded and it has to be zone to lighting. Signage, unfortunately, as I said before, additional signage is not allowed for public and some of public uses in the CH ten thousand zone. Staff did receive a public comment today. I just received it today. Actually, I believe it was sent last week and I was out and and missed that comment. And that was sent to you today. It was from an adjacent neighbor and they expressed concerns about the metal storage container, first of all. Also, the expansion of the building blocking their views and many other items. That can it it is important to point out that the Commission can only consider items that are related to the design of the building and the site. And of course, that does include the metal storage containers. So you certainly can consider comments about that. And I can bring that up for the Commission to read. If Commissioners have not seen that, let me go ahead and conclude my slide presentation first and then we we can ask that question and see if Commissions, the Commissioners would like to read that if they haven't had a chance to see that that letter. With that, staff recommends the Commission approved DRO twenty-one zero one zero with the conditions in the staff report. And with that, I'll take any questions. And Madam Chair, if you would like for me to bring up that email so the Commission can read that, I will do that.
Well, before you do that, Mr. Short, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask if any Commissioner would like to have that letter put on the screen. I did receive the email and I did read the the on the whole letter. So on Commissioner Walters, I see you unmuted.
I I would like to have that put on the screen. I did read that and I was fairly disturbed by it. I I I don't know how applicable a lot of those comments are, but but there's something that should be addressed by the the Fire Department there.
Okay, Mr. Short, would you please put the letter up? And then I do just I do just want to reiterate for the Commissioners on Mr. Short's direction that all we can look at is the DRO. This is not a conditional use permit.
Would the Commission like me to read the letter or do you prefer to just read it yourself?
On Commissioner Walters, what would be your preference? Do you want the letter read into the record?
It's it's a pretty detailed letter. I don't know that it's necessary to read it. I think it's it's up there on the screen and and the things that were primarily considering are the the storage container and the and the actual building itself, maybe the landscaping that goes around there.
The excuse me. Madam Chair, I would like to say that this letter will be included in the record for this case.
Okay, okay, thank you. And also just to reiterate what Mr. Short said, the metal, if we look at the recommended conditions of approval in our staff report, condition number two does address the metal storage container.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please go ahead, Commissioner Best.
If I might ask, one of the issues here was pile of asphalt and gravel. Would our would the landscaping design include that? In other words, could we require that that not happen again because of our landscaping design? And I guess that's a question for Mr. Short.
Yes, Mr. Short, could you could you address that? And and I would like to, while you're addressing that, I would like to ask if when you were on the site, did you see the piles of asphalt that is being referenced in this letter?
Madam Chair, I do not recall piles of asphalt. I hate to say it. I it's possible that I missed something like that about or something, but that would be a compliance issue. I I think it's something that would be more appropriately addressed as a compliance issue through our compliant co-compliance officer rather than in a DRO because it's not something that you normally can keep on the site. We could however, I think it is something since landscaping is addressed, that is something that if the Commission would like, we could add that to that condition.
Um, okay, what I'm going to do, we could modify condition number six on to state that any unsightly piles of asphalt, if there are any, be removed. When the applicant addresses the Commission, we could also ask the applicant if if that is in fact there and we'll go ahead and move forward in that direction. But if we do need to modify condition number six, we can certainly do it to to address that issue. Um, okay, so on Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Best, while you're unmuted, do you have any further questions? And then we're going to bump to Commissioner Clifford.
Well, I would just say that this letter does bring up concerns. It it looks like from the pictures I've seen, and I did not go to the site. But the pictures I've seen, there are two-story houses right up against the fence adjacent to the to this property. So folks are looking out their windows at what's going on here. It should look as good as we can help the Fire Department make it look. It certainly includes no piles of junk. Sheds appropriately painted. If there's anything and I and I would leave this up to people who want to comment during public the public portion, if we could move a few parking places around, if there's anything we could do that would help the neighbors, I would be open to that. I think that's a discussion that will unfold here as we go forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Clifford, you there, you're unmuted. Please go ahead.
Yeah, if you look at the picture of the metal container, you can see the pile next to it. Looks like it's right up against the fence and right up against the shed. So my concern is how are they going to paint that? And I see a ladder on top of it. Is this just going to be a place where they're going to be storing stuff higher and higher on top of that shed? So there there's some concerns there because if you look at that picture, it looks like there's a lot of stuff going on pallets. I can't tell what that looks like a blue rake or something next to the white shed. So you can kind of see the piles in that picture right there. That's fire hose or hose in a spare tire. I think that's what the public's concern is, is all that stuff is just laying around. But you can see the pile of reclaimed asphalt or stone right there.
Now, Madam Madam Chair, that would be a co-compliance issue. And obviously, this is the picture. I'm sorry about my my observation. I thought maybe they were using it for something on the site, I think, and didn't note it as being a code compliance issue. But certainly, it could be addressed because the the DRO looks at landscaping, but also site design. This is, I mean, it really is a code compliance issue more than a a DRO issue, but I think it's fully appropriate to put it as a condition in the in the DRO staff report.
Okay, and okay, thank you, Mr. Short. And where you say it would be appropriate to put it in the condition. Are you talking, are we still talking about condition number six?
Yes, I think it would be part of the landscaping to ensure that, I mean, the I mean, for landscaping on a site, it it should have landscaping and ground cover, but not storage of, you know, gravel on the site. So that is part of this. We could look at it as part of the site, the design of the site.
Okay, would you would you craft the appropriate verbiage, please? And then when when we get ready to move forward with this, I would like the conditions on the screen so all of the Commissioners can see exactly what we got going on. On Commissioner Williams, I see you unmuted.
Um, yeah, I'm just wondering if I'd like to have a little discussion on as part of the approval of this, that actually the shed and the storage container go away because they're increasing the size of the building to a huge degree. And it seems like these two things, whatever is of importance that's in there, they could move it in inside under the roof of the new building. Really looks pardon me, looks awful. And I can see why the neighbors are complaining and it just doesn't fit in the neighborhood and it's not even the right color. Like, nobody'd be able to have a bright yellow storage container in the county. So I would love to see both of these things gone and that whatever's in there be dealt with in the space of the new building. But is that something that we could put in here rather than just painting the storage container?
Uh, Mr. Short, could you address that? Because there there is a fine line between design review and and what we can do within the parameters of evaluating an application for that. So I want to be very careful that as we evaluate this, we don't step outside of the authority on that that we have. So, Mr. Short, could you give us some direction, please?
And I'm sure, let me give you a little bit of background on the storage container. According to the applicant, they they did, and they and not that this is super significant, but they did approach the county and ask if the storage container was allowed and they didn't. They indicated somebody at the county did tell them it was allowed. It was it was permitted. They didn't need a permit for it. That was incorrect information. So that is possibly true, you know, probably, man, I I don't, I definitely don't disagree with the applicant stating that. That has happened before, certainly. At the this type of storage container would typically be approved could be approved as a as part of an administrative approval, administrative permit in this zone. However, whenever it would have to be painted the correct color, right, a color to match the existing building like like staff has conditioned it. However, as part of the DRO, as as part of the design review, it does need to meet the design of a site. I think probably rather than having it completely removed, possibly have some requirements that would either shield it or make it look better or, you know, something to that effect. I think it might if if the Commission didn't believe it met the design guidelines, then I think that would be the way to address it. Rather than have it completely removed. What kind of, would you like to see? What would what would it look like? What what would make it meet those design guidelines?
Okay, and so so for clarification, we can't address the metal storage container in this design review. And if the Commission felt that it was unsightly or inappropriate, at this time, we could add a condition in there that said the metal storage container needs to be removed. Okay, that's that would be the what would I say, like worst case scenario for the applicant, that it be completely removed. But we also have the latitude to say, okay, if it's going to stay, then this is what we would like to see done to it. In addition to just condition number two, where it states the metal storage container should be painted a color that matches the new building expansion. Correct?
So it is it is a building. So it is, it is a building, it is being proposed as part of this application. So the 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 decision of the commission is, does it meet the design guidelines? And if it, if it doesn't meet the design guidelines, what does it need to meet the design guidelines?
Okay, okay, so we don't have the authority to remove it at this point in time, but rather to bring it into compliance for under the DRO.
That that's my understanding. For for example, the like, like, as you have seen with the with the case on the study session tonight, that was, that's that's not a metal storage container, but it's very much like a metal storage container. So this would have to be approved before it was installed through the DRO process. And I I understand the applicant didn't understand that this is new, this is a new part of the of the Belmont area plan. But before it was installed, it would have have, it would have to have been approved by the commission as a DRO. Since it was already here and there had been that history, then staff indicated that here it is, this is what's, this is what the applicant is proposing to do. But otherwise, it it would not have been allowed to be installed without a DRO approval.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, yes. Commissioner Ruggles?
Yeah, I have a question for Bob. Relative to the comment that Commissioner Clifford made about some items that are obviously stored outside, like the spare tire, pallets, a few other items that are in the photo of the storage container and shed, seems to me that going over the code, that is a code compliance issue. It's outdoor storage without screening.
Mr. Ruggles, that is correct. It is a compliance issue. That's why I was looking at this as not being so much a part of the DRO as it's a compliance issue. I think if you speak to the applicant tonight, I think they will say that they are willing to to take care of this compliance issue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Walters? Okay. Are there any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Ruggles, you're still unmuted. Do you have any other questions or comments for staff at this time?
I think that covered everything. So, thank you.
Okay, okay, um. You know, Mr. Short, I'm sitting here kind of running this discussion that we just had. So while it is the staff presentation time, there's, it seems like there's, you know, what really belongs to compliance, what really belongs to the DRO? And I would like to ask counsel, our legal counsel at this time, to address the commission and to tell us what we exactly, what we can and cannot do, so we do not step outside of our authority, but we know where our limits are within our legal parameters.
Jerome, Aaron Lumpkin here. Yes, forgive me, I've been having some IT trouble. So if you could repeat the question again for me, what the what the issue for issues up for consideration for regulation as opposed to what's design overlay review is calling for right now?
Um, okay, Mr. Lumpkin, it may just be me, but you're kind of coming in muffled. And I'm not, I'm not completely sure that I understood everything that you said. So let me just state my, state the question again. You have no doubt heard the conversation that the commission, the commissioners have been having with Mr. Short regarding what are our parameters for design review, which is what this case is tonight versus compliance issues? Because I want to be sure that we're within our, you know, within, we're operating within the parameters of the authority that we have and that we don't go outside of them. So could you, why don't we specifically talk about the metal storage container? What can this commission tonight do? What are the options that this commission can do with that metal storage container tonight? Can we ask that it be removed? Can we, you know, or or apply the design review standards to it? If you could give us some guidance on that, please.
Of course. Can you hear me a little bit better now?
Um, yes, I can hear you a little bit better.
Okay, my apologies, my headset is acting up. Um, my recommendation is going to be that with issues that are typically going to be handled by code compliance, that that be left to our code compliance officer to follow up on these points. I'm understanding that any other elements of the design of your overlay be handled separately. I mean, it's clearly been acknowledged with that, but if there's something that's not in compliance with code, I don't, I don't believe that this is the proper avenue to address a violation. This is where we're approving CUPs, as we can add those conditional use permits, conditions here. But with what seems to be a clear identified code compliance violation, I think it's probably safest and best practice to let the standard channel of a Mark Stenton with our code compliance office go out, review it, issue a notice of violation and proceed that way rather than working it into the DRO.
Okay, so just to recap, to make sure that I'm understanding it. On this, we're talking specifically now about the metal storage container. You see this as a compliance issue and you are counseling the commission this evening to stay away from that as far as asking that it be removed.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I feel that I'm pretty clear on on what our parameters are. If I would like to ask if there are any commissioners that are fuzzy at all? Because if you are, I want all the commissioners to to be absolutely certain on of what their understanding is. So, Commissioner Walters, I see that you are unmuted.
Yes, it's, in my years on the commission here, this building and the storage unit would be part of the DRO. The ladder, the outside storage area, the millings, the pallets, that sort of stuff are all all separate from that. But the DRO would in fact cover the shed and the the steel building. And I I do challenge that with Mr. Lumpkin.
Okay, but we can address the look of the storage shed.
I mean, the removal.
Is that your understanding, Mr. Is that your understanding, Mr. Walters? We can address the look of the storage shed, but we can't address the compliance of whether it is should be there or not.
Can can I, can I ask also?
Um, yeah, can, yeah, Commissioner Burton, go ahead. We certainly, we will, we'll discuss this at at on commission discussion as well. So please.
Well, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, yeah, I wanted more clarification because, you know, in a DRO, we can say whether or not a storage, I would think we could say whether or not a storage unit could be there. So if a storage unit is there, but we don't approve one in the DRO, then in theory, we're not technically asking them to remove it, but then that code compliance would have to ask them to remove it. Again, my kind of understanding, like, we could approve a DRO, but we wouldn't approve the storage units and or not just modifying what it looks like, because I I agree with Commissioner Williams. That is very unsightly, regardless of what color it would be painted.
I'm sure, can I make some clarification?
Yes, if you would, please, Mr. Short.
Okay, I'll just give you some more background. When the when the DRO first came to us, uh, the the storage container was not included as part of it. Uh, that's because the applicant indicates, and certainly, they, I I believe, I believe him when he says this, of course, uh, that he had called the county, the county had indicated that it did not require a permit. That was incorrect information that they had received. So he, they felt at that time that it was that it was approved through, you know, didn't require a permit. They could just place it there without a permit. So staff indicated you need to include on the site plan. I don't believe it was even, it wasn't even on the site plan at the time. And we would like to have a proposal that it, you know, at a minimum be painted the color to match the building. I did not find that in the in the information. It might be in there. I I certainly did not see it. So I added the condition that the storage container be painted the color of the primary color of the of the new expansion building. They did propose that the shed be painted that color that is on their site plan, written on their site plan. I have to also bring up the fact that, as far as I know, the shed supersedes the design review requirement, that it was on the site before the Belmont area plan was approved. I'm not positive about that, but I I believe that's correct. If it's less than 200 square feet, it doesn't require a building permit. Um, so that may be a different issue. Uh, I would have to verify that. I'm not positive of that, but I believe that's the case. So in this case, uh, it is possible, and we'll let the applicant speak, of course, that's going to be very important to this discussion. But it would be possible to approve the other parts of the DRO without the storage shed. And the applicant could come back later and make a proposal. They really didn't make a proposal this time, as far as I can tell.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Um, this, I I, in in some degree, this is all becoming as clear as mud. So on what I'm going to do, I do not see, oh, Commissioner Ruggles?
Yes, I have another question for Mr. Short. What does the, and and I should have looked at this beforehand myself. What does the code allow in terms of storage container on commercially zoned property like this?
Uh, well, at this point, for Belmont, it requires, it requires a DRO for approval, for one thing.
Just to have a storage shed on the property?
Oh, for a storage shed. Yes, it actually does. It actually does require a DRO, like, like I said earlier regarding another case, what is, what is allowed? I think in some sense, it has to do with the, with how substantial the development is, but the technicality in the DRO section of the zoning ordinance is that it allows for staff to approve fencing, signage, landscaping, lighting, and the color of the building, color of an existing building and that paint colors, that's that's it. So any, any additional building would require that. And I guess my point is, was the shed there before the DRO came into effect? And I think it, I think it was.
But my my question is actually, what does the code allow with the zoning? Not pertaining to the, this, this will kind of direct some of the discussion we're going to have later at the commission level. What does the code allow? Can you have a storage container on the property without regard to the DRO right now? Can you have a storage container on the property with the zoning for the fire station?
Yes, uh, the the code allows a eight by forty storage container can be approved with an administrative permit.
Okay.
However, I have to go step back again. That was that it it does, is required to go through design review.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Short, just to clarify, this this storage container does have an administrative on permit approving it to be on the property?
No, it does not have an administrative permit approving it. The applicant did, uh, did apply for that. But that can't be approved until the DRO is approved. Just, it's just like any other development, just like they can't build this expansion onto their building until the design of the expansion is approved.
Right, okay, so so it's kind of like what comes first here, the chicken or the egg? The design review has to be has to be done, although they have applied for this permit. It can be administratively, it can either be administratively granted or denied. Am I correct with that?
Uh, yes, but typically, you know, typically, you know, the apartment, the the our our aim is to have things brought into compliance. So in this sense, if they did bring that, if they did actually apply for the necessary permit, uh, then we would say, no, you gotta go to DRO first, which is the same, you know, right? Do you understand how that works? So that, the DRO does come first.
Okay, got you.
It come first.
Okay, but this shed, this storage container, is it part of the DRO this evening?
Yes, staff did ask that it be included in the DRO.
Gotcha. Okay, okay, gotcha. Okay, um, I'm not seeing anyone else unmuted or hands raised from the commissioners. So with that, I'm going to ask the applicant, the applicant's representative to address the commission. Please state your name and address for the record. Uh, you certainly have heard the questions from the commissioners to staff. And I would like to ask if you have read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions and go ahead and address the commission, please. So let's see, the applicant is Mr. is Mr. Riley, I believe, right? Do I have that right, Mr. Short? Yes. William Riley, Mr. Okay, Mr. Riley, could you please address the commission? Um, you know what, does he have? I don't see a mute by him. Does he have the ability, Mr. Short, to address the commission?
Madam Chair, I can look, but he should have the ability to address the commission.
Oh, there he go. Okay, I see him sign on again. Now he's got a phone. Mr. Riley, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can now, Mr. Riley. Okay, why don't you go ahead, state your name and address for the record and go ahead and address the commission on the discussion that you no doubt have heard.
Okay, yes, thank you. My name is William Riley with APMI Architecture, and my address is three two three North Larue Street, Flagstaff, Arizona, eight six zero zero one. Thank, thank you for this opportunity to talk. I I was hearing the previous discussion. I think the project itself, um, Mr. Short explained very carefully, so I will jump right to the the issues at hand, if that's okay.
Yes, please do.
For the first one on the signage, I think we we are in agreement that we can remove the signage from this request for the building mounted sign. Our intention was just to get an emblem for the fire station there over the main entry. Um, but the district, if they wish to, can pursue that at another time with the with the variance request or or a separate approval. So for this request, we would withdraw that signage. For the storage shed and the paint colors relative to the shed and the container, the shed is of an age that has been there for over 10 years. We would in our proposal, propose to paint that and paint it to the burlap color, which is a neutral brown color. That's the color of the existing concrete block that forms the wainscoting around the existing building. It's a kind of a neutral light brown color. And that would be our intention. The the pallets are are not there. That was just a temporary thing, I think, for when this photograph was taken, unfortunately. And then the the district will remove the ladder and the other, the exterior ladder that's on top of that container. That can be done immediately, so we can have that done tomorrow. The other outdoor items, I think, in terms of the tire and the fire hose, what those are are those are the physical fitness training hose and tire for their strength training for the for the firefighters. Um, so they are outside so they can perform those required duties. Um, so they are outside so they can perform those required duties. I think we could agree to, to find an appropriate place to store those. But that, they're not, they're not just there randomly as, you know, odd pieces of equipment as they might look, you know, in the photograph, but those are part of the district's operation. So the, the function of the, the container is for the storage of wildlife firefighting supplies and hash mat equipment in its, its oversized equipment, basically that's not going to go in through a personnel door and requires ready access. So that, that's kind of the purpose of what's going in there, just so everybody understands. We are obviously burst, bursting at the seams, which is why we need the expansion. The expansion will open up some storage areas, but there's not a large, there's no room in this particular expansion for these large items at this time. So that's kind of the back, the background on that. To jump to the millings, uh, uh, the gravel pile, but those are asphalt millings that the county, um, uh, was able to acquire with the idea that these would be used in our project for the pavement expansion. So it would, in terms of green, it will definitely gone at the end of our construction and, and we could come to a stipulation that it wouldn't be there as part of the final plan.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr.
Three items that I heard.
And, and I agree with you. I think that you have addressed all of them. Thank you for that clarification. Now I'm going to reach out and ask if any of the commissioners have any questions for you at this time. On Commissioner Walters.
Um, Mr. Riley, I heard your comments about the wildlife, wildland firefighting equipment that's stored in that unit. You've also seen the letter from one of the neighbors. I don't know if the other neighbors feel the same way, but how would you suggest to us that, that you could make that look less than eyesore? You've done such a good job on, on the design and the palette on the buildings of materials and, and those sort of things. And then you're just talking about painting the shed and, and proposing painting this and, and calling that acceptable right in their backyard. I, I'm just not with you on that.
I think, um, the, the original intention with that was to, you know, right now it, it jumps out as a, because it is a bright yellow. And that if we did paint it into a neutral color that would blend with that, um, the masonry is on the building, it will blend a little bit with the masonry color that is the site screening fence that's on the backyard. Beyond that, you know, as, as a fairly simple container or simple shed, in terms of adding architectural embellishment to it, once you, once you start to look into those kinds of solutions, then the, the, the value of the container starts to diminish as, as a storage, but the, the, the need or the capacity for storage for the district is definitely there. And what we were trying to seek was a relatively simple solution that would help make it blend in, you know, and I think to a certain degree, doing away with the items that are outside piled up around it would be, you know, a big start towards that. And then painting it into a, into a neutral color would, it would achieve a lot of the desired effect.
Well, I, I would agree with you that that's going to help, taking the ladder off the top is going to help. Um, I, I would think that you may suggest using landscaping such as aspen trees or some spruce or something around the back of it to help shield it from the neighbors to soften the look of it somewhat. So that you don't have a ten foot box sticking out there.
Yep, I think if that was, um, was a um, a mitigating effort that the, um, that we wanted to agree to at this meeting in terms of maybe planting a couple of trees at the back that might grow up into a screening. Because the screening, at the low level, there is the site wall that's there existing that does screen it. But from like an upper story window, looking at it at a higher level, something that a tree might grow up and, and screen. I think definitely we could consider something like that.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Williams.
Um, I was just wondering if you would consider just painting the doors, you know, the color you were talking about, but just siding, the siding with the same metal that you're using as, as an accent on the new building. So then at least it would look a lot better. And it doesn't seem like just adding some more of that metal to attach on the sides and maybe even the top of this would be that expensive. And then it would match the building, actually. It would just look a ton better. I mean, is that out of the question for for bumping up the design of this?
The, from, from a price standpoint, I think too, we, we are, um, you know, trying to, every, everything has a budget, of course. And we are trying to, to maximize our budget for the addition that we're doing to try to achieve that for the district. There is not a, a lot of wiggle room within that budget for any extras. Um, you know, one of the, one of the, there was a bigger proposal originally that has been scaled back a, a couple of years back to get to where we are today. Um, and then that has left, uh, has, has left like the, you know, interior storage for items such as this out of that proposal and that, and created the need for, for this additional storage. But there, there is a point where putting money towards dressing it up starts to get closer to the cost of, of building, you know, building that square footage new. I, I think I, I, if I had my preference, I do like the idea of the, the landscaping that was proposed earlier. That would be something that in addition to the painting, I think would start to screen that from the neighbors. And would be a, it would be a good long-term solution. It would actually probably would start to help mitigate some of the, the potential noise issues that were referenced in the letter as well, because vegetation does a good job of that. I, I would ask, I, I guess that we trend towards a solution like that. If that's possible, that, I think that would end up being a better long-term solution.
All right.
Um, Commissioner Best.
Since we are so deep in the weeds on this, I'll throw out another idea. And maybe this is a long-term idea. But that would be to move this storage back against the fence. So neighbors are looking at maybe, uh, something sticking up above their wall a foot or two with a roof painted appropriately. Instead of something out in the middle of the parking lot. I would think it would have to be stick built. But, uh, I don't know. At the guys in the firehouse know how to stick build. And I know firemen have a certain amount of time on their hands.
So that might be a, a long-term, long-term solution. And I think maybe a better one than trying to hide it with trees that, uh, i- if we go to junipers, they take forever to grow. And if we take a fast growing deciduous tree, they're bare half the year. So that's just an idea, if that makes any sense. I don't know how far we're going to get with this tonight, but I, I think the main thing is to, uh, you know, we're, we're creating a, a meeting hall here for the neighborhood. This, this whole fire department is in service to the neighborhood. Get together with the neighbors and, and make peace and make them love you and, uh, make sense of this. That would be my suggestion and it's, it's not, it's not very particular. But I think in the long run, if you guys work at this and talk to your neighbors, you'll work it out. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bass. Commissioner Ruggles.
Yeah, I, I'd like to offer a, uh, little bit of a counterpoint to what Mr. Riley had to say. In the past, when we have had, uh, issues like storage containers like this on properties is zoned, uh, residentially. Not only have we required in some instances, uh, landscaping such as, uh, trees, uh, to shield it from the neighbors, but we have also required that the owner of the property create something that looks more like the storage shed. It may be a faux roof on the top, slightly peaked, uh, that looks like a conventional storage shed. Uh, some property owners, uh, we have actually requested that they create a cabana, utilizing the, uh, storage container to do that. And to say that, well, it's out of the question here, uh, I think, uh, I, I think you need to consider some of those things that we have required for just, uh, residential property owners in the past in terms of making it palatable to the neighbors.
Okay, thank you, commercial, uh, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Um, what I'm going to do next is I'm going to ask, okay, I am not seeing anyone else unmuted or hands raised from the commission. So I'm going to assume that there are no further questions of the applicant at this time. So is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? If so, please unmute or raise your hand. Okay, and I am not seeing anyone. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public. I'm going to open it at commission discussion. Um, and Commissioner Williams, would you please start this evening?
Um, well, as far as this DRO goes, I mean, I think the crux of it is the storage container, as it turns out, because the design of the rest of the expansion of the building is lovely and everything. Um, so I, and I, I really agree with Commissioner Best on some of his thoughts about um, maybe having some dialogue with the neighbors, because it seems like there probably are some other issues beyond the scope of this that could be worked out. Um, but, but I also really agree with, um, Commissioner Ruggles, where we've made, you know, individual homeowners build roof structures and side and do all kinds of things to their storage containers so that they fit in. And I mean, I understand budget is a, a consideration, but it's always a consideration. So, you know, I'm not swayed so much by that because it's really not that much money in the scheme of things. So I guess I kind of feel like either the applicant does something to make this better above and beyond just painting it, or, um, it gets removed, or, I mean, I guess it could in a roundabout way get removed, but yeah, I don't know. Those are my, that, that's where I am at this moment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not unmute. Um, thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Clifford.
I think we're, we have to go back to what, uh, um, we were talking about with compliance and the building that we're looking at the DRO and the container happened to get thrown in there. So I think painting it for now, let compliance take care of the issue of the container. The fire department get with the public who are behind them, which are, I'm seeing four houses in this picture, and I know there's probably more. And get some public awareness out there. And I think that would be a good thing. I think for now, we need to focus on the DRO. Get it approved, let them build their building and let compliance take care of the container and the, uh, the shed issue. I, I, I can make the findings to approve the DRO, uh, under those conditions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I, I think that the time we've spent on this really emphasizes a cultural issue here. That there needs to be more communication between the fire part, department and the people they serve. Uh, I, I think a, uh, kind of ugly storage shed painted brown is now a brown ugly storage shed. Uh, I would put storage against the fence. Maybe it'd be seven or eight feet tall. I'd buy some, uh, Virginia creeper for the neighbors. And in two years, it would completely cover their fence and they'd be so happy. And it would go up over the top of the storage shed. So there's a long-term solution. Uh, short-term solution is, uh, do the best you can with the money you've got, uh, within follow, follow the law with the storage shed. And, uh, I think that's all we can do tonight. Main thing is start talking to the neighbors and, and everything that fire department does, everything they lay down, look around. Everybody's watching you, so, uh, respond appropriately. Beyond that, I can make the findings for this, this fairly simple DRO. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Burton.
Okay, so I don't have the, the application in front of me. Was the, is the shed officially part of the DRO application?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I, I can't get on board with the shed. The storage container. I don't care about the shed, the storage container. So I, I have no problem with the building, but I, I, I just can't do this, this storage container. Um, and, you know, Commissioner Best, the, we wouldn't, he, they wouldn't be able to put it up against the fence because you have zoning setbacks. So that, that would not really work. Um, the people would still be able to see the majority of it, um, when those zoning setbacks are taken into account. Aside from siding it and making it match, I, I can't get on board with the shed, which means I can't get on board with the arrow with the shed included in it. So, um, the, I mean, those are my thoughts. I mean, yeah, there needs to be some kind of screening and landscaping to go up in general um, to help the neighbors, but they also don't want their view completely obstructed either. So, I mean, there's, there's some tough decisions all the way around. And I do agree that the fire department needs to talk to the neighbors that butt up against their property. Um, and they need to have some kind of verbal agreement between them all. But I would propose that we remove, not physically remove the storage shed, but it needs to be addressed at a later time. That a part of this DRO, if that is removed from this DRO, so that we can approve their building, DRO. Um, those are my feelings.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Burton. Commissioner Ruggles.
Well, let's see, I've listened to, uh, what Commissioner Burton has had to say about this. And I'm thinking about this, uh, um, in terms of that, the, uh, the requirement that, uh, if we approve the DRO with the requirement for painting the, uh, storage container, uh, and, uh, although the shed isn't included in that condition, nevertheless, they said they would paint the shed. Nevertheless, uh, there's a cost included with that if we, we require it. But there's also the possibility that imposing that cost on them for painting it that, uh, down the road, it may not be possible to keep the storage container there, um, in, in compliance with the code. In all other respects, I can make the findings, uh, for this. Uh, they've got an excellent design for the building. Um, the addition is not as tall as the main building. Uh, it's very well designed, the colors, uh, and the overall appearance. Uh, it's very well designed, the colors, uh, and the overall appearance of it are very well thought out. I think, uh. If we were to exclude the storage container, uh, from the DRO in terms of, uh, painting it. Then, uh. Where are we down the road if it is not painted and. It is found to be in compliance with code requirements by being there. So, uh, I don't know, it's, uh. I think the best win-win, I think, would be, uh, in my opinion, uh, I can make the findings. And that it is probably best that, uh, the shed be, uh, painted along with the storage container. And, uh, we go at it from that point. And it's up, at that point, it'll be up to the fire district to say, well. Here we are, what are we going to do if, uh, we are found to not be in compliance with having the container there at all? So. It's kind of like kicking the can down the road, I suppose.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Walters.
I, I have heard the arguments. I've, I've listened to, to Will Riley on this and. I've worked with APMI, Tony and, and Adam a lot on, on projects. I just don't. I, and I understand how budgets are, but one of the best contractors. It appears that, that we have one of the best contractors building this, who's on, on here now. I, I would have liked to have seen a, a separate building just for this wildland fire stuff. If, if they can't make that work. Then, then. I think the only way that I can see to soften this is, is to put some big spruce trees and some aspen trees. In behind it, at least on two sides and, and do some community outreach with the neighbors and. And, and try to make them happy. You know, I, I love the building. I think it's a great design. I, I would like to see. The, the neighbors not being, um, having this ram down their throats. Would just by painting it. So. You, you know, for me to approve this, I'd really like to see some, some sort of a, a pretty good landscaping plan to, to shield this as well as the paint. So I, I can make the findings for that.
Okay, thank you, um, Commissioner Walters. This is Chair Aunt Taveris. And, um, certainly the building is beautiful. On the sign will be coming down on the front of the building. Uh, that's per code. Um. But this is a DRO that we have to deal with tonight, and we are now aware that this storage shed is part of this DRO, um. Application. So the commission at this time. We have the ability. To decide what this shed is going, or what this storage shed is going to look like. That's, that's why we're here. It's design review. I have heard Mr. Riley's, um, and. Like I, I get budgets. We all are dealing with budgets. On. But I think that we need tonight. I think we need to figure out what we need this storage container to look like. And I think we need to attach the conditions to make it look like that. So if the commission does not feel. That painting it is. Is really fitting the, the. The intent of the design review, how we want this to look. We need to go back, and I'm going to go back to the commission on. Do we require that a cabana be put over it? Because I heard, I believe that was Commissioner Ruggles. That suggested that, just a simple cabana to go over it, which basically shields it and makes it look. Much more like a building than a storage container. What we're trying to do here. Is, uh, make this place look nice. And so. We're gonna, that's the commission's job to do that. So we need to figure out what we want, how we want to address this storage container. So we feel that we have met the design review guidelines. So Commissioner Ruggles suggested a cabana. That to me. On Commissioner Walters, you, you are the building guy here. On. On this commission, you have a lot of expertise in that. Is a cabana hugely expensive?
Well, I, I don't know what, what the cabana might actually look like, but the, the comments that I've seen in that one letter that we got from the neighbor behind here. Is that he's concerned with the height already. So adding anything to the height. Um, other than, than maybe a siding over the top of it, does, it seems counterproductive to me.
Okay, let me ask you this. Commissioner Walters, what would you put out as a solution, a viable solution? To have this meet the design review, to make it look nice?
Well, as I stated earlier, the only thing that I can come up with that, that won't terribly impact the budget. Is, is to paint this and, and to put some, at least three large spruce trees and some aspen trees around here. To, to, that'll grow up and help soften this. But you know, it's still going to be 10 foot tall and. And it's, it's, it's needed by the fire department. So you know, there's going to have to be. Some discussions with the neighbors and, and to try to come up with some sort of a solution to them as well. But I, I would think that the landscaping is. Is probably the cheapest option at this point.
Okay, on. And Mr. Short, I just wanted to confirm that if we do approve it with just having them paint the storage container. That does meet the guidelines for the DRO, correct?
Madam Chair, the, yeah, the guidelines are, are a little bit flexible. It talks about metal. It does talk about metal and certain colors. Uh, so that, that, that's kind of a discretionary decision. I would like to point out. In some sense. It's real, the, the proposal before you right now is just, here's the metal storage container. And staff has actually added that condition. I don't believe it was even something proposed by the applicant. Did it be painted to match the building? So that's what you have in front of you right now. You can, of course, add on a cabana or. Or trees, you know, vegetation to screen it. I did actually, uh, suggest that to the applicant. Um, and, uh, and they didn't like the idea at the time when I suggested the trees to screen it, something to screen it. Uh, one of the things that. In some sense, the commission is now, and this is certainly you can do, something you can do, but the commission is designing this for them. And it's almost like they should propose what they would like that meets, if this doesn't, if what they're proposing now doesn't meet the DRO standards. Then it's possible you could, you could, uh, ask for continuance and have them come back next month with something that does. You could also actually. Approve the DRO without the storage container in the DRO at this time, but I don't like leaving that. That's kind of like leaving it hanging out there. It's a compliance issue. They need to propose something and come back for the DRO for that as well, because this is not approved, obviously, until it, it meets. Until it is approved, uh, the design is approved by the commission. So.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Short. And that actually is going back to what Commissioner Burton. On, has, has suggested. So we could approve the design review. For the building. The applicant has certainly heard the concerns of the commissioners. On the neighbor, neighbors. And if we were to break this up, they would have to come back to the commission. And say, I would like to put this storage shed here and here's what I'm going to do. Here's how it's going to look. So. With that, um. Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised.
And I'm sure, uh, it might be useful to. Ask the applicant if they have any new ideas in the last. Half hour or hour. Uh, since they've heard a lot about this. Storage shed.
Yeah, and, and thank you, Commissioner Best. That's actually what I was going to do next. So, um. Mr. Levin, I see your hand raised. Are you with, are you part of the applicant here? Like, are you associated with the applicant? And are you, do you want to suggest something for this storage container?
Good evening, Mike Levin, Levin Contracting. 1100 North or 1100 South Pinnacle Street, Flagstaff, Arizona, 6001. We, we hold a design build contract. With Panderosa Fire District. So I am authorized to speak with the applicant. It, we are in partnership with APMI, the Design Architects. So a few comments for consideration, please. Um, while there may be some objections within the community. I would welcome the Belmont community to also consider the importance of the Panderosa Fire District in their neighborhood. Next closest fire district would be the city of Flagstaff. Which is some 25 minutes away and weather dependent. So there's a value judgment to pay to the importance of the fire district. I feel that this, the county attorney spoke previously on coupling and decoupling these issues. And the commissioners can make of that what they wish. Speaking on behalf of the applicant, we would be willing to install matching metal siding. On the west side of the storage container. And add the vegetation that Commissioner Walters has suggested. I think that would be the happy compromise. Relative to the email that was presented this evening. I noticed a series of two-story houses in proximity, so I questioned the comment about use. I think in summation, the fire district is important to the health and welfare of the Belmont community. We are willing to put siding on the west side of the storage container, paint the balance of the container, implant the trees. As Mr. Walters has suggested, as a compromise to the benefit of ourselves and the community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Levin. Uh, Commissioner Walters, I would like you to comment on that, please. Basically, what, what they're saying there. Is what you had suggested to the commission, and now they're saying we're going to side the west side.
I, I think that, that the, it, it appears to me that they still need to use the indoors on here. So it would be very difficult to side those and, and. And, uh, I like the idea of, of them doing the west side. That's more than I asked for. And doing the landscaping. So I, I embrace their idea.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My hand is now not raised. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Okay, I'm going to go through here. Um. Okay, we're going to go through here one more time. If I see you unmuted, Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, I'm going to, um. Come down on the side of the comments that I have, uh, heard from Commissioner Walters and also from Mike Levin. Um, I would agree with that. I just took a look at the dimensions for a, uh. An eight by 40 container and they're, uh, eight foot six high. So. Whatever you set it on is going to raise that a little bit. So, um, closer to the fence isn't going to help anybody. Um, and I think if you add, uh, landscaping and add siding along with the color mashing the building. Um, I think that's going to be a pretty good compromise here.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. And Commissioner Burton, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, if they're willing to side the, the, the side that's visible to the neighbors and paint and do the, the trees. Then I'm completely on board with that.
Okay. Um, I'm, I see. Thank you for that. And Commissioner Williams.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to come back around and say, um. Uh, Mr. Levin's suggestion, I think is a great compromise, and that in addition to paint and trees. Would, uh. Uh, make me feel a lot better about this.
Okay. Alrighty, then I think we all can see what direction we're headed in now. So Mr. Short, if you can please pull the conditions up. On the screen for all to see. And we're also going to. Make any modifications so we know we're all on the same page, and then we'll move to a motion in a second.
Hey, Madam Chair, give me one second. I'll bring that up.
Mr. Short, while you're doing that, I just want to reach back out to Mr. Levin. I see your hand raised. Are you raising it because you do have something further to say?
No, that is because I am technologically challenged.
And please know this for sure, I'm not judging you because I, I'm, I'm in the same boat with you. Yeah. Okay, I just, I just wanted to be sure that, that all the comments, uh, questions, concerns were out there. So I just did that out of courtesy. Uh, not to, not to point out that you're technologically challenged.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Short, for getting those up there. Okay. I would like all of the commissioners, please, um, to look at condition number two. And make sure that that is what we have talked about.
I do need to make a, a comment on that. Uh, since, uh, this condition deals only with metal storage container. Uh, wouldn't it be advisable to say storage structures and. The metal and a, and, or a storage containers. And the storage container shall be painted a color that matches the new building. Uh, just to, uh, make sure that, uh, there is no disagreement about what's to be painted, what color in the future.
Did you get that, Mr. Short?
Uh, I'm sure I did, but I, well, actually, I heard that, but I'm, I'm not clear exactly. Could you repeat that, uh, Mr. Ruggles?
We're only dealing with the metal storage container in condition two, so wouldn't it be best to state that not only the storage container, but. Uh. The storage structure or a, other storage structures shall be painted. A color that matches the new building. Um, not sure that's the best wording. I'm leaving that up to you, who are a very good wordsmith.
Mr. Ruggles. Are you referring to the shed?
Yes.
Okay, the shed has already been, uh, if you look at the site plan closely. At the bottom, it, it does indicate the shed is supposed to be. To be painted the color, a color to match the building.
Well.
So that, so that is, that, that, that is covered. Is, is that what you mean?
As long as, uh, as long as that is, uh, well, enforceable, so to speak. Um, if it, uh, if we have a requirement that it has to comply substantially with the, uh, plan. Uh, all well and good, but I didn't see that anywhere.
So I can, I can pull it up if you'd like to see it.
Um, but is that in the conditions that, uh, it has to, anything like that has to comply substantially? I don't think so.
Uh, Commissioner Ruggles, when you, like, for example, with a DRO. You have the staff report and then you have all of the attached documentation. Which includes the materials list and all of those things, including the site plan, the landscape plan, all of that is part of the documentation. For the DRO. So part of the documentation is that it's indicated on the site plan. That the storage shed will be painted, uh, burlap, which is one of the colors, the primary color of the building. So it, it, it is in the record.
As long as we got it, as long as we've got it in the record so that there is, uh, there can be no disagreement about it in the future. And if there is another storage building, uh, eventually added. Then how do we deal with that?
Another storage, uh, building on the site would. I mean, I know this may sound a little bit harsh, but it, it is not covered under the DRO section in the code. It indicates that, that, that is required to go through the DRO process.
Okay, uh, then I, I think we'll, we'll have to go with what we got, and if. They choose to add another storage building, then, uh. We'll look at it further down the road. Um, if it is, uh, on the site plan, um, then it is shown as, uh, the burlap color. Uh, I think, I think that's good enough then.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Williams, do you have comments on the modified version of condition number two?
Um, yeah, I'm just wondering about that. The sec, the. The last sentence, eight landscape trees, do we want to be a little more specific saying conifers? Which, as opposed to deciduous trees or anything about the height? You know, I mean, should they get six-foot trees to start with, or eight-foot trees, because you can? Or is just is just eight trees going to be specific enough to do what we want it to do?
Commissioner Williams, yeah, I did throw this together fairly quickly. And so I'm indicating that landscape trees that are in the landscape section, it's section 4.4. However, more specificity would certainly be called for in this case. So you could actually call out the height of the tree and the type of tree. Obviously, conifers aren't going to lose their leaves in the winter, and they will provide screening all year, so that might be a consideration.
Yeah, I mean, personally, that's what I would prefer. And in that case, if we said, you know, six-foot trees to start with, then you wouldn't need eight of them, certainly, because they do grow pretty fast and they get big. So it's only 40 feet long, so you know, I would think that you wouldn't need more than four of them, but.
Let's ask Mr. Lovin what he's proposing.
Yes, I do see his hand raised. So Mr. Lovin, could you please weigh in?
Good evening again, in spirit of compromise with the neighborhood, if we were to plant eight trees, let us do four deciduous trees of four foot in height and four conifer trees of four foot in height. And that will provide a uniform barrier over time between the seasons.
Thank you, Mr. Lovin.
One, just one thing to consider, you do have a 40-foot storage container in terms of the number of trees. So any fewer than eight, I don't think would be appropriate.
I wasn't suggesting that, I was suggesting four conifer and four deciduous for a total of eight.
No, sir, I am not disagreeing with you in any way on this. I'm just putting that out for the rest of the commission. I don't want to change anything that you have suggested in terms of the types of trees.
Mr. Short, could you please put in condition number two, the proposal that Mr. Lovin just put out? And I honestly think that that is, I think that that is a good compromise. Like, I think we, I think we kind of need to stop here now. Because I think that that is good. Okay, now, does everyone, is everyone, are all of the commissioners, are we good on that? Let's see. Okay, let's wait until it's all done, okay? Okay, do any of the commissioners have any concerns with that now? Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised.
Madam Chair, yeah, you know, I've never asked this before, but is an irrigation system assumed to be a part of every landscape plan? And this is to Bob Short.
Yes.
Yes, it is?
Mr. Best, Mr. Best, yes.
Okay.
Unless, and I did want to say, sorry, I should stay unmuted, I guess. I was indicating that in the zoning ordinance, it requires six-foot evergreen trees or eight-foot deciduous trees. And that certainly would allow for a lot more coverage than the four-foot trees, I think the applicant had indicated. So, but that's, if the commission would like the four-foot trees, that's fine.
I like the sound of what you just said, and I'm glad that there's an irrigation system, because they'll, you know, five years or so with trees of that size, I think will make a big difference. Thank you.
Okay, so just to recap, condition number two is out there as Mr. Short has modified it? Are we all on the same page here? Anyone who's not raised their hand, just so we can get this clarified?
Can we specify the heights of the trees that Mr. Short just said?
Yeah, we can. Commissioner Ruggles?
I was just going to say, I was good to go with two, the way it reads. But I think Mr. Short has answered the question about the height of the trees.
Okay.
I'm just going to change this to evergreen, consistent with what the ordinance says.
Okay. All right, and that is consistent with section 4.4 of the zoning ordinance, all right. With that, there is the modification, when someone makes the motion, we do need to modify condition number five. Remember, as stated when Mr. Short was giving the presentation. So I think with that, I believe we're ready to head to a motion, please.
I'm ready to make a motion for DRO-21-010, as modified and shown on the screen here.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Walters and a second by Commissioner Ruggles to approve DRO 21-010, as modified on the screen. With that, all in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveris, I also vote aye. So DRO 21-010 is approved with the modified conditions. The last item on the agenda tonight is called to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission tonight, this evening, for items not on the agenda? And seeing none, my clock shows 7:44, and the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you all.
Good night, everyone.